Okay, we are live. Sergeants, will you begin your recordings?
Computer recording started.
Okay, cloud is up. Now, good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing on criminal justice. At this time, will all panelists please turn on your videos for verification purposes? To minimize disruption, please place electronic devices on vibrate or silent mode. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we may begin.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for helping to make this happen today. And good morning and welcome to the fiscal year 2023 preliminary budget hearing of the Committee on Criminal Justice. I'm Councilmember Carolina Rivera, Committee Chair. Today, we will first hear from the Department of Probation, followed by the Department of Correction, and then public testimony. Our goals are big, but they are not unattainable, and they are certainly reasonable. The starting point that we face today may render success harder to come by, but by no means will that stop us from fighting for better for all New Yorkers. For as long as I've been in office, I've said we need to follow the data. That could not be truer than it is here this morning. It is imperative that we receive comprehensive and accurate data to ensure that we are budgeting responsibly, both fiscally and for the safety of all involved in the operations of the Departments of Probations and Correction. There are simple transformative solutions available to us, and I hope I speak for all of us here when I say we are committed to pursuing reform. Before we begin, I do want to take a moment to thank committee staff, Senior Financial Analyst Jack Story, Deputy Director Aisha Wright, Senior Policy Analyst Keyshawn Denny, and Committee Counsel Agatha Mabropoulos. I'd also like to thank my team, Deputy Chief of Staff and Budget Director Katie Loeb, Legislative Director Isabel Chandler, and Communications Director Alexis Richards. Now, I will turn it over to our Committee Counsel to go over some procedural matters for this hearing.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Agatha Mabropoulos, and I'm Counsel to the Committee on Criminal Justice. Before we begin, I want to remind everyone that you will be on mute until you are called upon to testify. When it is your turn to testify, you will receive a prompt to unmute. Please listen for your name to be called, as I will periodically announce who the next panelists will be. Please be aware that there could be a delay in muting and unmuting, so please be patient. During the hearing, if council members would like to ask questions, please use the Zoom raise hand function, and you will be called on to speak. We will be limiting council member questions to five minutes, including responses. I will now administer the oath to the members of the administration. After I say the oath, please wait for me to call your name and respond one by one. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm that your testimony will be truthful to the best of your knowledge, information, and beliefs? Commissioner Anna Bermudez.
Yes, I do.
Deputy Commissioner Janine Gray.
Yes, I do.
Deputy Commissioner Sharon Goodwin. Sorry, we're not hearing you, Deputy Commissioner Goodwin. We'll come back to you in one second. Deputy Commissioner Michael Forte.
Yes, I do.
And Wayne McKenzie.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Sharon, I think you're unmuted now?
Yes, yes, I do.
Thank you. Commissioner Bermudez, you may begin when ready.
Good morning, Chair Rivera and members of the Criminal Justice Committee. I am Anna Bermudez, Commissioner of the New York City Department of Probation. I am joined today by my Cabinet Deputy Commissioners Sharon Goodwin, Janine Gray, Michael Forte, and General Counsel Wayne McKenzie. I thank you for the opportunity to testify about the important work of the Department of Probation and its preliminary fiscal year 2023 budget. As some of us are new to each other, I wanted to take a moment first to frame probation's unique role among the other law enforcement and public safety agencies. Statutorily, probation is an alternative to incarceration, where a judge has determined that a person can remain in the community under our supervision. In practice, it is an engine of change, a pivotal moment where the person has the opportunity to work with their probation officer to change their behavior, redress their actions, and transform their life. Too often, public safety is narrowly defined as the absence of crime. However, true public safety is much more than that. It is about having a strong connection to fellow human beings in one's community. Often, when people come onto probation, that connection has been eroded. Using a combination of prevention and intervention, New York City probation officers work to rebuild that connection by helping people change their behavior, reconnect with their community, and create a path out of the system. And it is what we call a probation, then they're new now. There are two other misconceptions that need clarification. A lot of times, we're often confused with parole and with the supervised release system. Parole involves the supervision of people returning from prison by the state, and supervised release involves pretrial oversight, and it's operated by the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice through community-based providers. The fact that New York City probation works with justice-involved people to get to a new now and how we do it makes us unique in this system. What we do cannot be the role of police officers, and community-based organizations don't have the enforcement powers sometimes needed while working on behavior change. So we're able to leverage both risk management, the supervision or monitoring intensity, and risk reduction, the supportive elements that help people to change. And that is the pivotal role of this department, utilizing a one-size-fits-one balance of structure and support to help people change their behavior and remain safely in their community, leading to better life outcomes for them, their families, and our city. As the city's largest alternative to incarceration, I am proud of this department's critical role in safely supervising people on probation throughout the five boroughs. Last year, probation provided intake, investigation, and supervision services for nearly 30,000 cases and directly supervised more than 17,000 individuals. That is more than three times the average New York City daily jail census and at a fraction of the cost of incarceration. And with the numbers we're seeing this fiscal year to date, we're on track towards 40,000 total cases for this year. In order to ensure we remain positioned to successfully manage this volume, our next probation officer civil service exam is a little over a month away. Therefore, we're launching a citywide recruitment and recruitment advertising campaign to help find our next generation of change agents, because, make no mistake about it, probation officers are at the core of everything you're hearing about today. Last year, despite the ongoing pandemic, probation officers in our Intelligence Division conducted 6,163 field visits and 1,757 enforcement actions, which included gang-related investigations, DUI field visit checks, failure to report home visits, bench warrant enforcement actions, responding to NYPD domestic incident reports, and transporting prisoners to and from other jurisdictions. These actions, done with PPE and utilizing proper safety protocols, resulted in the recovery of various weapons, including firearms and other contraband, allowing us to safely and effectively balance risk management with risk reduction. In fact, just yesterday, they recovered four firearms, including two semi-automatic assault rifles and narcotics in Brooklyn. For fiscal year 2023, the Department of Probation has a preliminary budget of $119.2 million as compared to our fiscal year 2022 adopted budget of $124.9 million. When compared to our current budget of $125.1 million, the fiscal year 23 preliminary budget of $119.2 million is 5.9 million or 4.7% less, inclusive of a $3 million peg reduction. Of the $119.2 million allocated to our preliminary budget, 68% or 80.9 million is for personal services, and 32% or 38.3 million is for other than personal services. 97.3 million are city tax levy funds, 14.6% million are state funds, 6.3 million are intercity funds, and 1 million are federal grant funds. State funding, which at one time reimbursed almost half of local probation costs, now provides only 12.2% of our operating costs. Our budget priorities focus on building transformative relationships that meet the unique needs of people on probation through credible messengers using age-appropriate interventions for our young people and their families and providing critical resources and opportunities in the larger communities they call home through our Neighborhood Opportunity Network, or NEONs. In our work, it is not only the services and resources that we offer, but how they are offered and by whom that makes a difference. Credible messengers are people whose life experiences, including their own justice involvement, help them to engage justice-involved young people and their families in ways that others alone cannot. As formerly system-involved people are often the most willing and best able to address some of the toughest challenges facing their own communities, we transform lives by effectively leveraging these trusted relationships in key areas of our work. Our ARCH's transformative mentoring program for 16- to 24-year-olds on probation, which works with credible messenger mentors, is a proven success. An independent evaluation of ARCHs found that one year after beginning probation, ARCH's participants' felony reconviction rates are 69% lower, and two years after remain 57% lower compared to those not in the program. Any expert will tell you that's unprecedented, those findings in the justice system. In ARCHs, credible messenger mentors run group sessions using cognitive behavioral interactions and are available 24/7 for one-on-one support. Working as a team with probation officers, mentors help young people make better and safer decisions, pursue their goals, repair relationships with family and community, and connect to education and employment opportunities, all of which helps to increase the safety of the participants and their communities. This is why last month's announcement by Mayor Adams that every person on probation under the age of 21 will be connected to a credible messenger mentor is so important. And I want to thank him again for recognizing the effectiveness of this crucial intervention. An influx of requests from other jurisdictions asking how to replicate the credible messenger model inspired the creation of an interdisciplinary national training and research center, the Credible Messenger Justice Center, or CMJC, in partnership with the nonprofit Community Connections for Youth and the City University of New York. CMJC recently released new research on transformative mentoring called "A Gathering Movement", which highlights the work of jurisdictions who participated in DOP credible messenger learning immersions as part of their own efforts to similarly prevent crime and further advance community justice. These jurisdictions recognize the critical role of community-based credible messenger programs in reducing violence and changing lives. To address the needs of our juveniles on probation and their families, we also use credible messengers as parent coaches in our Family Court Parents Support Program. Parent coaches, whose own children have been justice-involved, provide individual supports to parents, guardians, and families who are so often confused, frustrated, and overwhelmed in navigating the juvenile justice system and other systems as well. We have served over 2,500 families, resulting in a reduction of out-of-home placement as parent coaches and families work together to find community-based options to support their children. The ARCH's intervention, CMJC, and parent coaches are part of what works in criminal justice. The research shows that not only do community-based approaches to engaging justice-involved young people work, but that connecting young people at high risk of justice involvement to credible messenger mentors strengthens communities and helps to safely keep people out of prison and jail. As someone who's dedicated their career to not giving up ever on our city's young people and in my personal capacity as a parent, I can say that without a doubt that young people have unique needs in comparison to older adults. Our experience in learning what works with this age group from ARCHs and our own probation officers inspired the launch of Anyone Can Excel, or ACE, a one-size-fits-one approach to address the specific challenges facing young adults 16 to 24 under probation supervision in criminal court. Prior to ACE, our emerging adults made up about 1/3 of our caseloads, but disproportionately represented almost half of our rearrests. ACE is an evidence-informed and youth-centered model focusing on mentorship, goal-setting, core life skills, job preparation, and accountability. The model is grounded in what works to improve outcomes for adolescents and young adults, the science of adolescent brain development, the risk need and responsiveness principle, motivational interviewing, and both restorative and positive youth justice. Probation officers function as coaches, as opposed to referees, and ACE teams create a sense of belonging and hope for a successful future outside of the justice system. The model prioritizes the voices of young people and helps them build the skills to advocate for themselves and their new now. Most of all, ACE provides a strong community for all involved, as evidenced by ACE youth actually calling to check on the health and safety of their probation officers during the pandemic. Focusing resources on the people and communities where they are needed most can make the biggest impact on advancing public safety and community justice. That ethos is what inspired the Neighborhood Opportunity Network, a unique and trusted place-based approach that provides a range of services to people on probation and other community members in seven New York City neighborhoods disproportionately impacted by the justice system for decades: the South Bronx, Harlem, Jamaica, Bed-Stuy, Brownsville, East New York, and Northern Staten Island. Those neighborhoods coincide with the findings of the Seven Neighborhood Study, which revealed that almost all of the New York State prison population came from just seven neighborhoods in our city. Our NEONs strive to have the opposite impact, serving as engines of equity by working with residents and service providers to develop solutions from the ground up, invest valuable resources, and help to restore a sense of agency in these communities. And we're seeing the results pay off. Residents of NEON neighborhoods are now successfully completing probation at the same rate as residents of neighborhoods without the structural challenges. Though there is still a lot more work to do, I am proud of this department's contribution toward ensuring that justice system outcomes are not solely defined by a person's zip code. Or as Bronx VP Gibson recently said at our Bronx NEON with Councilmember Stevens, "We won't let your block block your blessings." Part of what makes the NEON model so powerful is how it grows and evolves to meet our communities' needs. Our NEON nutrition kitchens, the brainchild of committed probation officers who were feeding hungry clients, have been a lifeline in these communities, feeding over half a million people last year. This is an unimaginable fivefold increase from before the pandemic. And a shout-out to Councilmember Wrestler for all your hard work in a prior role implementing IDNYC. DOP is proud to have enrolled thousands of people into IDNYC at our NEONs. Another program, NEON Works, created in partnership with the Young Men's Initiative, the Center for Youth Employment, and the Mayor's Office of Economic Opportunity, is an employability development program designed for people on probation and other NEON neighborhood residents, particularly young adults aged 16 to 24. To date, NEON Works has served 876 people looking to advance their career goals, including 219 who secured a job or internship. And with our recently rolled-out bus shelter advertising campaign in targeted neighborhoods, NEON Works is another way to ensure that more of the people we serve can access and have the skills needed to find and keep a job. All these supports ensure that time with probation, mandated or not, is a holistic experience that connects people to new opportunities that can change their lives, what many of us call "human justice." That could not be more apparent that with NEON Arts, our public-private partnership with Carnegie Hall that offers young people in NEON neighborhoods the opportunity to explore the various art disciplines such as dance, music, theater, visual arts, poetry, and digital media. An independent evaluation showed that NEON Arts increases engagement, builds stronger relationships, particularly with adults and other community members, and creates change within the participants in how they view themselves and their hopes for the future. Since 2020, NEON Arts has served 3,278 New York City residents by quickly pivoting to digital programming, including over 1,000 people who received work experience and vocational skills. NEON Arts partnered with City Cleanup Corps and Artist Corps, helping to beautify NYC by completing 21 projects across the city. The Made in New York Animation Project, our partnership with the Animation Project and the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment, has had over 8,000 young people learn digital animation skills, helping to grow the pipeline for New York City's tech and video game sector. And our paid neon photography program has had over 600 participants with work most recently exhibited and sold at Denise B. Bro Fine Art and the Kente Royal Gallery. One particularly talented photographer sold six of his photos totaling over $1,600, and he used that money to find and secure himself's stable housing. That kind of life-changing impact speaks for itself. I want to thank you again, Chair Rivera, and the Council for its forward-thinking vision and previous strong support and hopefully continued support of NEON Arts through the innovative criminal justice programs initiative, for it is truly changing and saving the lives of the people who serve. As you have heard, probation is unique in our role of providing community-based prevention and intervention for people who would otherwise be incarcerated, keeping them in their communities where they can build their new now. Another great example is Andre Whitehead, a former NEON photography participant, who, like many people on probation, had a path to success that was anything but straightforward. Since learning professional photography skills in the program, Andre has taken photos for Park Avenue pianos, New York Fashion Week, and even the Thanksgiving Day Parade, to name a few. He now teaches many of our NEON photography classes around the city and was hired full-time as the Assistant Director of NEON Photography. During my reappointment with Mayor Adams, Andre summed up the power of this program perfectly when he held up his camera and said, "This camera saved my life." And that's the essence of our work, creating a new now for people on probation in a one-size-fits-one approach so that we strengthen communities and change lives. Thank you for the opportunity to testify about the critical work performed by the committed staff of this department. We're pleased to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you for being here and for your commitment to the people of New York City. Before questions, I just want to acknowledge Councilmembers Caban, Carr, Hanif, Narcisse, Powers, Wrestlers, Schulman, and Stevens, and I'll be sure to keep a lookout for anyone else that is to join us. So again, I just want to thank you for everything. I know we're here to talk about the budget, so let's jump right in. The fiscal 2023 preliminary plan includes $2.9 million in savings in fiscal 2022 and $2.4 million in fiscal 2023 by reducing 42 vacancies in those two years. How will this vacancy reduction impact the department's operations? And what positions are being reduced? And is the department going to shift resources to cover any service gaps?
So, we are not anticipating any issues with staying staff-ready. We're in conversations with OMB to make sure that as cases now ramp up in the courts that the efficiencies we've had because of the pandemic attrition, et cetera, you know, are balanced out. We haven't lost any staff, and we don't anticipate losing any staff. So we're working to, you know, to make sure that we can do some other funding switches to account for the efficiencies we have to achieve fiscally.
Okay, so in terms of program that you do offer, on February 28th, your reappointment as DOP Commissioner, I'm back, and announced the administration's expansion of credible messenger programs and the Neighborhood Opportunity Network that you touched on. However, the preliminary plan did not include any additional funding to expand these programs. Going to expand these initiatives, and will it use existing resources?
Right. You broke up a little bit, but I think I got the gist of the question, which was about the announcement of the expansion of the mentoring and the NEONs, I believe. So... I'm sorry, say that again.
Specifically because there did not have any additional funding to incorporate.
Right, because right now, we're adequately funded to engage in the ramp-up for the expansions, and we're in conversations with OMB for what our needs may be moving forward in the out-years. But right now, we are equipped to expand some of the programs that we already have. So we're in good shape. And I don't know, Deputy Commissioner Forte wants to add anything to that?
Yeah, no, that's correct. And for some of the expanded NEON programming in the summer, there will be additional funds being transferred into the budget, but it's just not reflected right now. But for the most part, it's through changing eligibility requirements for some of the existing programs. And because we have had slightly lower participation rates in the course of the pandemic, we're able to cover those slots now. And as we see where the participants fall into each of the programs, we'll be adjusting the funding accordingly. So we're comfortable and confident that we have what we need to make sure that each person 21 and under is connected to a credible messenger mentor and to be able to really substantially build on the NEON programming going forward.
And just to make sure, and let me just apologize for 2:50 Broadway technical difficulties. Were there any credible messenger programs increased in the preliminary plan? I'm sorry if I missed that part.
Michael, you want to?
Yeah, no, not at this time. Again, we have some flexibility. It's not a singular program, so we have multiple credible messenger programs that we run. So we have flexibility in shifting the funding across those programs. And once we see where the enrollments land, it's at that point that we'll look to make the adjustments.
Is there adequate baseline funding for NEON's expansive programming currently in the budget? And how much do you anticipate? How much funding for NEON does the department anticipate recognizing throughout the fiscal year? Go ahead, Michael.
The vast majority of it is already built into the budget. There's about $1 million being lined up that will come into the budget to help cover some of the summer expansion. And beyond that, you know, there are other talks underway. You know, it's a little bit of a work in progress. We have capacity to expand already. We have that close to $1 million coming in, and then we're working on other ads as well.
And do you know approximately how much money you would need to expand NEON even further to more neighborhoods?
So, let me take part of that. So, the expansion of NEONs, of the NEON concept is more of depth and breadth than location because the way where our NEON offices are located are places where there's a high concentration of people on probation who live in that area, and therefore, it's an economy of scale both for them and for us. And so, we have a couple of places where we had been meaning to go, like the Northern Bronx. And then we have a secondary model that we call the satellite model, where there's not permanent probation officers in locations, but probation officers are given space by some CBOs, and they spend a couple of days a week to serve clients in those areas. But it all hinges on concentration of addresses of people who are on probation.
What do you think the Department of Probation's role is in addressing the city's rise in gun violence? And how is the Department of Probation working with other agencies to address gun violence? And did the preliminary plan include any additional resources for addressing the issue?
So, addressing gun violence is everything we do. You know, like, in terms of working with people who are coming in, we have a series of protocols and policies that have been specially implemented for people coming in with not even for people coming in with not even just gun violence, but any kind of violent felony offenses, right? And so there's extra teams of officers who go to people's homes. Um we we there's more intensive risk management, um you know, uh uh initiatives in the beginning. As we work with people with our cognitive-based interventions and anti-violence programming, et cetera, the Arches program is critical to this because a lot of the concentration of um of that violence is among the young people, uh unfortunately. And so um it's all hands on deck basically every day, all day, uh Castle Member. Oh, and and in terms of your question, we have staff at the Crime Strategies um you uh unit at N Y P D and at Haida. We have in juvenile, uh we have a partnership. We were working together with YCOs in the hot precincts where our young people have uh been getting in in trouble and we go out together. Um you know, uh with them to ensure that everybody's safe, both our young people and the community. So um so we work together with with uh certainly with N Y P D and others um to to ensure public safety.
No, and I thank you for that and and mentioning specific communities. I was just speaking with some of my colleagues, uh many of us who represent um specifically a large population of public housing families and the resources that are needed there. So we look forward to working with you and and we're certainly glad that you are reappointed. Um and with that, I actually.
One thing, because you've mentioned something that I I neglected to mention. We have an adaptation of the Arches uh credible messenger mentoring uh program in the in fifteen of uh New York City Housing Authority developments um for young people who are not on probation yet. So that's on the preventive side of things. And we'll be happy to engage with you and your colleagues to to see which um locations match to you so that you can also spread the word to constituents, you know, to get us the knuckleheads that are, you know, um brewing in there or that we can uh hopefully uh connect to the next steps program.
Absolutely. We we will certainly do that, and we have every hope that um we could reach as many young people specifically as possible. So thank you uh for answering my questions. I do see that um Councilmember Powers has his hand up, so I will turn it over to him for questioning.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Rivera, and nice to see you, Commissioner, and hope you're doing well. And thank you for all the work that you're doing and your agency is doing. Chair Rivera asked one of the questions I want to ask is really kind of how do you fit into the mayor's plan blueprint to end gun violence? I think you spoke to a little bit, um but I guess maybe my second part of that question would be, do you see an expanded role or where would you enhance uh with the work that you're doing in the coming years? Particularly when we look at the gun safety problem that's, you know, plaguing the city right now.
You know, I think um one of the things that is really important and that we're seeing a recovery in this is swift action, right? When you're dealing with um any type of of violence, um and you see any signs that things are not going in the right direction, having quick access to the courts and to other people to hold, you know, people accountable is very important. I think that's an area that um, you know, uh we suffered a bit over over the pandemic and now we're seeing a recovery, so that's great. Um I think that um keeping us certainly uh nimble enough with staffing so that we can do the what people call, you know, and we call it to precision, either precision policing precision, you know, probation, so that we can respond quickly to uh emerging trends in various locations and precincts, et cetera, which um to to Councilmember Rivera's uh point of following the data, we do that quite, you know, that's one of the tenants of our of our agency. Um so I can't say specifically, um but I know that we are often in conversations about what's needed and 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 I think we're well-equipped to to still handle uh the situation.
Got it. You you think you are well-equipped right now, or do you think you feel like you need more staff?
Yeah, no, I think I well, well, we're we're having uh, you know, uh we have a few academies. Uh we just completed an academy and and have another one coming up. And then the uh probation officer exam so that we have, we can deepen the bench, if you will. Um we are catching up a little bit. We're we're a little behind, um you know, because of the pandemic. But uh but overall, I think we're well-posed um at this moment to cover the issues.
Okay, great. Well, thank you again for all the work you're doing and nice to see you and hope you're tied to safety.
Thank you. Next, your call on C M Wrestler. Um if any other members have questions, please use the Zoom raise hand function. And please keep your questions to five minutes, including responses.
Great. Well, I firstly, I want to thank our Chair Carolina Rivera. It was great to see you this morning and really, really, really appreciate your uh strong leadership of this committee. We're really fortunate to have you at the helm. It's one of the most important committees in the council. And I want to um congratulate Commissioner Bermudez for her very well-deserved reappointment. Uh it was a, I think, a really smart choice by the mayor. And uh you've cultivated a great leadership team over the years at D O P. And so um we know that in addition to you, you have a really strong team of uh great deputy commissioners and general counsel and and folks who are doing really good work that we that I really value. And I'm fortunate that the um uh that uh you've got uh locations in our district in downtown Brooklyn at the Brooklyn Municipal Building. And I'm eager to come over for a visit and figure out how I can be helpful and supportive in any way uh that we can. I wanted to just follow up on something you just mentioned, which was that there's an iteration of the Arches program that's preventative, where you're uh focusing on uh nitrogen developments. Uh I think you mentioned fifteen around the city. Uh I don't know if there's an opportunity to consider additional nitrogen developments or if that's still in process. But I just wanted to highlight Guanis Houses uh in my district, which is a almost twelve-hundred-unit development that hasn't had a functional community center in decades. There's no programming whatsoever for our young adults. Uh we really need help and there's no cure violence uh program that serves the area. We really um it's a vacuum and uh would love to partner with D O P to think about ways that we can engage our young adults. And if there's a credible messenger program that we could bring to the area to help constructively engage our young people there, that would be a an enormous uh benefit to to our constituents. So um just open, if if that's an opportunity for coordination or collaboration, would love to to set up some time to to connect.
Um Deputy Commissioner Forte can correct me, but I think there was a slated expansion into Guanis of next steps. Uh so we're working on that. Yes.
Michael, is that true?
Yes, yes.
That's awesome. So we're gonna get to work together some more. I look forward to that. Um great. I really, really appreciate it. Um let us know if we can set up a introductory meeting. Would lo- love to make it as successful as possible in Guanis, but I am thrilled to hear that news. Um and I really, really appreciate it. You've already made my morning. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Really look forward to working together. And I I just, I want to underscore my my earlier point that Mayor Adams made the right choice here. And and we're fortunate to have you to in continued leadership in New York City. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Next, we will hear from Councilmember Stevens.
Good morning, everyone. Um I just have um two really quick questions. Um and obviously, I'm always gonna ask about you, but I just wanted to know around what's the plan to increase the Incredible Messengers and Neo program since no additional funding has been allocated to these programs? And I know you talked a little about about it, but I just wanted to hear a little bit more. And then what um what recent evaluations have any been done on crisis management systems and the NEA program? Um because I'm real, you know, these are programs that I'm really passionate about and I think are amazing. But I do think that there is a lack of evaluating to see where we are um going and what's working or what's not working. So I would love to hear about um what evaluations are being done um in both those programs to continue to make sure that we're focusing and stressing on um what matters most.
So in terms of the crisis management system, we we don't operate them, so I don't know. Um I I couldn't comment on evaluations there. Um in terms of Neon, the neons, we we have an evaluation of the neons. Uh the thing is that the neons are not intended to be a um recidivism reduction or, you know, like the metrics of of those evaluations are um a little different uh than when we evaluated the Arches Mentoring Program because the Arches Mentoring Evaluation had a control group, had a, you know, um et cetera. And that's why the the findings are so um incredible, sixty-seven percent reduction in felony recondictions um in the first year. And so so the the credible messenger mentoring programs have been uh evaluated. Also, our juvenile AIM program, which is an an alternative to placement program that's credible messenger-based, has also been evaluated and found that um I believe it was up to ninety percent of the young people avoided uh reincarceration. Um so in the in that program, so I think, you know, we are definitely making evidence um as we run the programs, um and we're very excited to continue uh growing them.
Thank you.
Um seeing no further council members with their hands up, I'll turn it back to Chair Rivera for any further questions.
Well, Commissioner, I just want to thank you again. You know, we are um pleased that you'll be continuing in this role. And we look forward to working with you as you expand as much as possible. I know that um we just have a lot of faith in the programs that you've implemented and the leadership there. So please uh uh you know, consider us partners and and very much looking forward to the term ahead.
Great, same here. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we will turn to the Department of Correction. Oh, I see Councilmember Narcisse has her hand up.
Good morning.
I just want to make sure that the uh that you want to ask the Department of Probation Commissioner a question?
Yeah, the probation, but not, it's just more likely a statement and piggyback on what Althea is saying. Um so thank you, Madame Chair Rivera, for putting this together and thank you all the team. Commissioner, thank you for the work that you're doing. Appreciate you. Gun violence is a daily activity for me in my community in the forty-sixth district. So um I would like to see more funding, like we said, around gun violence and keeping our youth out of trouble. And thank you for the um thinking about culture and art. And I always tell people that's the best way to escape. So this is a great way of going toward it. And whatever you can do for the forty-sixth district, keep on pushing, and that's what we're doing in our community. And I want to make sure that our children not criminalized and put away instead of using their mind and doing better because they can produce in society. It's just opportunity. That's all they're looking for. So let's create opportunity for our youth, for the for the next tomorrow to be better, the next generation to be better. Thank you.
Agree. The Department of Probation has been described as the largest and most robust alternative to incarceration in in New York City. And I know uh you provided innovative and multi-pronged services to communities around the city as well as New Yorkers on probation. So uh we thank you and we look forward to working with you. And for our members of the public, there will be a session for public testimony. So I want you to know, thank you for being here. Thank you for your patience. I'll turn it over to Committee Council.
Yes, thank you. Now we will turn to the Department of Correction. Um Chair, I believe you have an opening statement?
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. We're gonna turn to the Department of Correction. Commissioner Molina, I believe, is here.
Good morning.
Good morning. I see you. Okay. Um I just want to welcome you to your first preliminary budget hearing before this committee. Um as we all know, the Department of Correction is in crisis. And to say that this committee is concerned is a grave understatement. Last week, the Independent Federal Monitor released a devastating special report that tells of egregious inhumanity and human rights abuses. The data and horrific anecdotes reveal reveal an unparalleled state of dysfunction, mismanagement, and negligence, to the point that the Monitor cites non-compliance with safety and security protocols as elementary as locking doors. The Monitor's report confirms the jails are destabilizing and unsafe for both incarcerated individuals and the staff reporting to work exacerbated by dehumanizing levels of fear of harm experienced by all. The findings on staffing and resource management are especially alarming. One billion dollars of the department's fiscal year twenty twenty-three preliminary budget is allocated for personal services. Yet the Monitor found, and I quote, "The department's most critical resource, its staff, is so poorly administered that even the most basic aspects of workforce management have been neglected or circumvented for decades." They then go on to conclude that the department is unable to effectively manage where staff are working and when. Simply increasing the number of staff will not solve the department's problems. The Department of Correction must explain the steps it is taking to implement the Monitor's recommendations as well as how it plans to address approaches to deploying, supervising, and managing its workforce. The committee will also seek to understand how proposed increases in funding for overtime, which has already exceeded the budgeted amount by more than fifty million dollars, and medical evaluations in the preliminary plan serve any purpose, if at all, to address critical structural issues in workforce management. The committee shares the Monitor's conclusion that the department's failure to manage its staff is directly linked to the perilous breakdown of safety and security as well as soaring rates of violence and use of force. Unfortunately, we also agree that without radical action to address the rampant culture of disorder that reform is unattainable. The department's one point two three billion-dollar preliminary budget is substantial, but it remains unclear how this administration's first budget will serve to address the ongoing crisis at hand. Regardless, this committee and the greater council will pursue robust oversight, accountability, and reform of the Department of Corrections and its budget. With that, I will turn it over to Committee Council to go over procedural items.
Thank you. I will now administer the oath to all members of the administration. After I say the oath, please wait for me to call your name and respond one by one. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm that your testimony will be truthful to the best of your knowledge, information, and belief? Commissioner Louis Molina.
Yes.
Chief of Department Kenneth Stukes.
Yes.
Chief of Staff Kat Thompson.
Yes.
First Deputy Commissioner and Chief Diversity Officer Lenell McGinley-Liddy.
Yes.
Deputy Commissioner for Financial Facility and Fleet Administration Patricia Lyons.
Yes.
Deputy Commissioner for Programs and Community Partnerships Francis Torres.
Yes.
Deputy Commissioner for Legal Matters Assam Raman.
Yes.
Senior Policy Advisor Chelsea Chard.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Molina, you may begin when ready.
Good morning, Chair Rivera and the members of the Committee on Criminal Justice. I am Louis Molina, the Commissioner of the Department of Correction, and I'm pleased to join you today uh to be joined today by my dedicated members of my leadership team, including the Chief of Department Kenneth Stukes, our first Deputy Commissioner and Chief Diversity Officer Lenell Magne-Liddy, Deputy Commissioner of Financial Facility and Fleet Administration Patricia Lyons, Deputy Commissioner of Programs and Community Partnerships Francis Torres, Deputy Commissioner for Legal Matters Assam Rahman, and the Chief of Staff Kat Thompson. Today, my colleagues and I are here to discuss the preliminary budget for fiscal year twenty-three and my vision for the future of this department. But it would be impossible to do that without acknowledging the impact of COVID nineteen on our city's jails and the reform that is urgently needed to address the longstanding issues facing this agency. First, I want to acknowledge the deaths in custody that we have experienced this year. Mr. Tarj Youngblood, Mr. George Pagan, and Mr. Herman Diaz. Any death in custody is one too many, and my deepest sympathy goes out to the family and loved ones of these individuals. When someone dies in custody, it is a public health issue. And we need to make sure all parts of our public health system and city at large are supporting these individuals in their time of need. I also want to acknowledge the deaths of active-duty DOC uniform members of the service. Last year, this department lost fourteen active-duty members of service, including some of whom died of COVID nineteen complications. The start of my tenure has unfortunately been marked by grief due to the passing of staff as well. In twenty-twenty-two, we sadly lost three active-duty correction officers and one non-uniform staff member. Correction Officers Norbert Jones, Elisa Latush, Alex Comer, and electrician Arthur DeChichi. I also would like to acknowledge the loss of former Commissioner William Fraser and former Chief of Department Larry Davis. These individuals left an indelible mark on the department, and I want to express my deepest condolences to their family and colleagues. We owe it to them and our current staff and the public to improve this agency. It has been just over two months since I began my tenure as Commissioner of this agency. And I have already begun building a constructive partnership between the department and the members of this committee. Today, I want to take the opportunity to share my vision for the New York City Department of Correction. And what I believe to be the pathway to achieving safer and more humane jails. But first, I want to take a moment to introduce myself to you and the public. First, as a native New Yorker raised in the Bronx, it is deeply humbling to lead this agency. Especially when the majority of the staff and the people entrusted in our care look like me and come from the same kind of community I grew up in. My vision for this agency is informed by both lived and professional experiences. Working in all three major pillars of our criminal justice system, policing, the District Attorney's Office and Corrections. Most recently, I served as Chief of the City of Las Vegas Department of Public Safety. Prior to that, I was the First Deputy Commissioner at the Westchester County Department of Correction. An agency that I successfully transitioned out of federal oversight. I've also worked at the Brooklyn District Attorney's Office, and I was a tenured uniform member of the New York City Police Department. I am also no stranger to the New York City Department of Correction or its long history with the federal monitor. Having served as the first chief internal monitor and acting assistant commissioner of the New Year's Compliance Unit from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen. Outside of my work experience, I know firsthand the impact of crime and incarceration on a personal level. Criminal justice reform work is deeply important to me, and I made a commitment over two decades ago to change this system from within. I have wanted this job for a long time, despite knowing the many challenges that this department faces. I want to be clear. I strongly believe in criminal justice reform. I am unequivocally committed to transparency and restoring public trust in this agency. I believe that working with the council as well as other stakeholders throughout the city is essential to making our jails better. You will surely hear me say this again today and throughout my tenure at this agency. These are the foundational principles that guide my work. Last month, I hosted members of this committee on a tour of our jails to assess concerns and discuss how we can work together to address them. I've met over one hundred advocates and community-based organizations, dozens of elected officials. Public defenders and oversight bodies, including the federal monitor. And intend to continue these meetings on a regular basis. These relationships and the conversations they bring are vital to me because I know that we share an important goal. To maintain safe and humane jails for the people in our custodial care and staff. So that we can enhance public safety in our city. I hope to show you over the coming months that I value your input and your oversight. I do not have to tell you that the need for reform in our city's jails has never been more urgent than it is now. The COVID nineteen pandemic has created challenges that no one could have foreseen and exacerbated many that have long been at issue. Deterioration of conditions and overworked labor force, rising levels of violence. And an understandable concern for public safety. Throughout the pandemic, this agency worked tirelessly in partnership with correctional health services to mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen. Within our jails, consistently keeping the in-jail COVID nineteen positivity rate lower than the citywide average. That is something to be proud of and should not be overlooked, but we must recognize that there were trade-offs. Although some people were able to telework, staff and healthcare workers at this agency continue to heroically serve our city. While simultaneously managing the impact of the virus had on their family and their loved ones. People in custody have been living in jails with failing infrastructures and with limited access to the programs and services they need and deserve. As a result of COVID nineteen quarantine and safety protocols. This year, our population was projected to sit at fewer than four thousand people in custody. And yet, due to the impacts throughout the justice system brought on by the pandemic, today our population is at approximately just above fifty-five hundred individuals. More violent offenders are being placed in our custody and staying in our care longer due to the department's admissions. Outpacing discharges nearly every month from May twenty-twenty through August twenty-twenty-one. From January two thousand nineteen to January two thousand twenty-two, the average length of stay increased from one hundred eighty-seven days. To three hundred and twenty-nine days. To places into perspective, our department's length of stay is four times longer than the Los Angeles County Jail. Which is the largest jail system in America. While our incarcerated population has been steadily increasing, the department's workforce has decreased significantly. The department has nearly two thousand fewer correction offices today than it did at the end of two thousand and nineteen. The last time the agency held a graduation ceremony for recruit correction officers until early this year. This attrition of staff coupled with the staff that is unavailable because of the impact of pandemic surges and other medical needs. Has diminished our staffing levels. Fewer staff have been managing a larger, more challenging population during a global pandemic. Morale when I took over this department was at an all-time low for everyone, and it is vital that we take action now to address these issues. Last week, the federal monitor filed a special report with the court that highlighted longstanding issues troubling the department. Much of the same that is in this report has been communicated to me by staff during my twenty-twenty-one agency assessment. And after my appointment as Commissioner when visiting our facilities and business units. The conditions and dysfunction described in the report are deeply troubling and unacceptable. Our staff and the people in our custody deserve dignity and safety, and we need to be accountable and do better. As the monitor and many others have pointed out, these issues were a long time in the making. And many of them were made worse by this global crisis, which is still with us. Accordingly, these longstanding issues were not going to be solved in my first three months in this position. As I said in the press conference when I was appointed Commissioner, I will not be making fly-by-night decisions to improve this agency. Will be, will be undertaking strategic, evidence-based, comprehensive solutions to all of our problems. Our staff, as the monitor pointed out and you pointed out, are our most vital resource. And frontline leaders in our efforts for reform, and we cannot succeed in any meaningful way without appropriately and adequately supporting them. We must focus on staff wellness and organizational health, which have been overlooked for far too long. To start, we have reinstituted the city's employment assistance program onsite at Rikers Island. Expanded faith-based resources exclusively for staff and are looking to enhance the management of our health management division. When I took office at the beginning of this year, over thirty percent of our uniform staff were out sick. Over these past two months, we focusing efforts on engaging staff who are out sick, providing the on-the-ground, peer-to-peer support. To get them back to work fit and healthy. These efforts have been paying off. We have had over thirteen hundred staff return to work since January first. Lowering the percentage of, to approximately nineteen percent. In addition, our recent graduating class of recruits serves as a beacon of hope. As we look toward the future of the department and I'm pleased to welcome them onboard. They join the ranks of many dedicated members of service. Another cohort of recruit correction officers will graduate in late spring to support our workforce. The year-to-date increase in staff availability has enabled us to return to a retiree of facilities to eight-hour tours. From working twelve-hour tours. It has also greatly reduced our reliance on triple shifts and incidences of unstaffed posts. While these initial trends are promising, we still have a long way to go to get staffing numbers back to normal. We must also provide staff with the tools and authority to create and uphold safe and orderly facilities. And will do so by aligning our policies and security procedures with correctional best practices. I will continue to make expectations clear and attainable. And processes for staff accountability, meaningful and focused on improving outcomes. In the same way that we can't punish our way out of misbehavior amongst the incarcerated population in custody. We can't just punish our way through staff accountability. However, with staff discipline is necessary, we will follow the corrective action process in a manner that is transparent and fair. To put that in context, in less than three months, I have already reviewed roughly three hundred disciplinary cases. And supported disciplinary actions which have included termination. This includes cases stemming from incidents that went as far back as two thousand and seventeen. I'm committed to a timely and meaningful disciplinary process. We have already begun to explore technological solutions to optimize our operational decision-making through an evidence-based approach. It is time to embrace technology that is available to us to collect and utilize data in both our short-term decision-making. And our long-term planning. I recognize how we are managing this agency and using data to support our operational decisions. Will be critical to rebuilding trust that had been lost over the years. In addition to these future-facing approaches to scheduling, deployment and other operations. We're exploring new management initiatives to support our workforce and contract partners to effectively execute the mission of this agency. I'm also looking forward to onboarding a new leadership team for our training and development division. And ensuring our correction officers and staff at all ranks receive the best training and skills. To successfully fulfill the mission of this agency. Together with appropriate support and investment, I know we can succeed. Focusing on staff-supported resources, organizational help and correctional best practices. As a means to ensure safety are fundamental to how we approach success. We need all these things so that we can provide targeted services to the people in our custody. We absolutely must provide people in custody support, opportunity and belief in change. The people in our custody have gone without congregant in-person services and family visitation for a majority of the past two years. While adhering to housing and quarantine protocols designed to mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen. But I want to be clear that these housing policies were and are necessary to keep people in a congregate setting healthy. During a time of tremendous risk and uncertainty. But they had consequences. These services are lifelines for people in custody. And restoring these vital connections was amongst my first priorities as we look to restore safety and stability to our facilities. As more staff became available to work, we began welcoming external contract providers back into the jails. And worked with our partners at the Department of Health to resume in-person visitation starting last February ninth. In the coming weeks, we'll be restoring congregate religious and program services in a safe and gradual manner. With modifications were needed to ensure people in custody have access to programs and services they need and deserve. And we will not stop there. For me, programs and services are imperative. Everyone benefits when people in custody are given the tools they need to have less contact with the justice system in the future. As we move towards modern facilities with the Bro-based Jail Plan, we must also modernize the way we are delivering our programs and services. I don't intend to wait until we have new facilities to bring this system into the twenty-first century. We are expanding the use of tablets for our people in custody. If there is anything the pandemic has taught us, it's to leverage technology. The tablets have been a tool for us to communicate timely updates and provide programming to people in custody. And we are excited as we continue to expand access. The services we provide must be meaningful, evidence-based and targeted to the needs of the population. And outcomes must be measurable. This department will have a dedicated team whose full-time job will be to develop systems. To track and evaluate programs and operations. To ensure our decisions are data-driven and that our results can be shared transparently with our stakeholders. As testament to my commitment to more targeted and impactful programming, I've already made changes to the department policy. That would allow credible messengers into our facilities to engage with young people in custody and interrupt violence and gang issues. Increasing access and opportunities for education is a, another priority for me. Recently, the Department of Education Chancellor David Banks joined me on a tour of the East River Academy Schools at two of our jails. To discuss how to strengthen our partnership so we can enhance educational opportunities for our students. This tour signifies a renewed commitment to educational access within our jails, which has proven to reduce recidivism. And change the trajectory of a young person's life. Our passionate workforce for programming staff, external contract providers and uniform staff are committed. To transforming our facilities into learning environments for the benefit of people in our care. Flooding our facilities with meaningful, targeted programming and educational services will decrease idleness. And in turn, reduce violence. More than that, it will support the well-being of those in our care and their hope for the future. In order for everything I've spoken about to work, we must support people in custody. In unlearning violent behavior and learning to deal with conflict in a more constructive way. Prior to the beginning of my tenure, the Board of Correction adopted new rules with this same goal in mind. Governing restrictive housing and implementing risk management accountability system, which is also known by as RMAS. RMAS is a tiered housing system designed to address serious violent behavior. And with progressive level is designed to encourage and support behavioral modification. It is, it is a critical part of a holistic approach to violence reduction. RMAS will move us away from a response to violence that was purely punitive and create a system that holds people accountable. Separates them from the general population so that they cannot continue to do harm to others. And provides restoration and rehabilitation to address the root cause of their violent responses to conflict. The fact that there are people who commit acts of violence at Rikers Island. And we need to, we need a way to separate those individuals in order to keep people safe. The method must be effective, it must be humane and it must be fair. Those are the principles that I see in the RMAS rules, and those are the principles I've committed to implementing. When I started as Commissioner, the agency's RMAS plan that was underway was not in line with my goals. The needs of our staff or the spirit of the border correction rule. I knew we could do better. I greatly appreciate the board, council and the public's patience. As a department has worked over the past two months to reshape RMAS into a system. That will not only meet the legal requirements of the board's rule, but will go above and beyond to meet the spirit of the rule. All levels of the RMAS housing spectrum will be housed in one facility, G R V C. Individuals at all levels will have access to an open day room for congregant programming that mirrors general population units. As opposed to individualized day rooms. We will not be using restraints of any kind during lockout in any RMAS unit. In order to maintain safety within this congregate setting, these units will maintain a low census and high staff ratios. With staff who have received specialized training, my program team has developed a comprehensive plan for both individualized and congregant programming. That will progress with the individual through the RMAS levels. This program plan is aimed at behavioral modification for individuals living in these areas. Though it is later than many had hoped, I am firmly committed to full implementation of this improved plan for RMAS by July first. And look forward to sharing more details with you as we move into questions portion of today's hearing. RMAS will be an important tool in managing violence within our jails, but it is not our only tool. Violence rates have been increasing in New York City jails year over year, despite many concerted efforts to turn the tide. And history has shown that there is no one solution. I recognize that we must take a holistic approach to address violence within our jails. And I'm not waiting for the implementation of RMAS to start that process. As with staffing and programming and services, we must modernize our approach to violence prevention and reduction. We cannot manage what we cannot effectively measure. Our new management, analysis and planning team will be focused on leveraging data and research. To create a clear underground picture of our facility's operations at any given time. With the goal of using that information to make operations more efficient and reduce violence within our city's jails. Already, we have begun to move away from housing people in. Already, we have begun to move away from housing people in custody by gang affiliation. And have started rebalancing housing units in line with correctional best practices. I believe this will restore a sense of safety for both staff and people in custody that has been lost. We've also increased our use of tactical search operations, which are critical means of contraband recovery within our jails. Less contraband will lead to fewer serious violent incidences and injuries. These efforts combined with the progress we've already made on programming and an increase in staff availability. Have brought a reduction in violence numbers. Since last year at this time, assaults on uniformed staff are down nineteen percent. And assaults on non-uniformed staff are down forty-six percent. Overall use of force is also down twenty-five percent compared to this time last year, which is certainly promising. We have made progress over the first two and a half months of this administration. In light of the significant longstanding challenges that were inherited from our predecessors. But I recognize that there is still significant work to be done to further decrease rates of violence and use of force across the Department of Correction facilities. As we turn to this fiscal year twenty-three preliminary budget and its impact on the department. We must face some hard truths that have been brought about by the pandemic. COVID nineteen has impacted the population reduction goals and staffing projections that are inextricably linked to the Bro-Based Jail Plan. Despite these challenges, we remain committed to protecting all those living and working within our facilities. And are working towards improving organizational health and operational efficiency. The department's fiscal year twenty-three preliminary expense budget is one point two three billion dollars. The vast majority of this eighty-six percent is allocated for personnel services and fourteen percent for other than personnel services. The fiscal year twenty-three preliminary budget is one hundred and six point six million less than this year's budget of one point three four billion. This decrease is largely due to funding provided in fiscal year twenty-two, only for emergency executive order initiative and overtime. Included in the preliminary budget are increases of one hundred point one million in fiscal year twenty-two and thirteen point nine million in fiscal year twenty-three. The following are some highlights of major initiatives that were included in the preliminary budget. Tablet program for people in custody, an increase of six point six million in fiscal year twenty-two. To expand access to programs and enrichment activities and reduce idleness. Sick call initiative, an increase of fourteen point six million in fiscal year twenty-two. And one point six million in fiscal year twenty-three to help with the volume of uniform medical evaluations. Overtime adjustment, an additional fifty-two million in fiscal year twenty-two to offset increased overtime spending. ADA improvements on Rikers Island, an increase of eight hundred and fifty thousand in fiscal year twenty-two. And eleven point eight million in fiscal year twenty-three due to capital inability of various projects. COVID-deferred retro payments, an increase of forty-one nine million in fiscal year twenty-two. Vaccine incentive for staff, an increase of five hundred and thirty-six thousand in fiscal year twenty-two. To fund a five hundred dollar incentive that was active this past October and November. Contracted attorneys, an increase of four hundred ninety-five thousand in fiscal year twenty-two. To clear cases that must be closed pursuant to the federal court remedial order. COVID nineteen testing and vaccinations, an increase of eight point three million in FEMA funding for fiscal year twenty-two. Continuing testing and vaccination services for DOC and CHS staff on Rikers Island. With regards to capital funding, the fiscal year twenty-three preliminary capital budget and commitment plan totals nine point six billion dollars. Which covers fiscal years twenty-two through fiscal year thirty-one. The major changes reflected in this plan are the self-funding of a hundred and twenty-four point seven million. For emergency work being performed on Rikers Island by the Department of Design and Construction. And the redistribution of planned commitments associated with the new academy for fiscal year twenty-six. To fiscal year twenty-three through fiscal year twenty-five. We fully support this redistribution as our current academy is outdated and not conducive for training correctional professionals. For twenty-first century best practices. There were no adjustments made to the Bro-Based Jail project in this financial plan. Turning now to headcount and overtime, given the staffing challenges the department has been facing this fiscal year. Along with continued to keep E M T C and O B C C operational due to COVID nineteen. Operating twelve-hour tours as a result of the vaccine mandate and higher-than-anticipated average daily population. Our overtime spending will be comparable to what we spent in fiscal year seventeen. As we see staff returning to work, we are moving towards reducing the reliance on overtime where practicable. The following is a summary of the changes to the department's non-uniform and uniform authorized staffing levels included in the preliminary budget. The non-uniform authorized full-time headcount is one thousand nine sixty-two in fiscal year twenty-two. And one thousand nine fifty-eight in fiscal year twenty-three and the out-years. Fiscal year twenty-two authorized headcount is slightly greater than fiscal year twenty-three. Due to a baseline adjustment to mock J positions that reside in the Department of Corrections budget. The uniform authorized headcount is seven thousand four hundred and sixty in fiscal year twenty-two. And seven thousand sixty in fiscal year twenty-three and the out-years. The authorized uniform headcount decreases from fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-three. Due to the correction officer class of four hundred that was funded in fiscal year twenty-two and continues to remain unfunded in fiscal year twenty-three. My testimony before you today is more than just words, it's about taking action. I am determined to move us forward and bring our jails into the modern era. Change has already begun, and I'm confident my plans for this agency will usher us towards success. Those plans include increasing accountability, restoring and supporting best correctional practices. And enhancing support for our staff and leveraging data to modernize our operations. I am humbled, as I said earlier, to lead this department at this time of crisis. And I'm inspired by the commitment to public service embodied by our staff. But it's going to take more than just myself and our dedicated staff to improve the lives of individuals in our custodial care that are in great need. I know members of this council and the public have been frustrated with the longstanding issues facing this department. I am too. We are at a historic moment in which together, we have the opportunity to create a more humane system of justice for this city and this country. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today and for your support. My colleagues and I are available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I want to recognize we've been joined by council members Krishnan Holden and I believe Abreu. Let's get into it. Thank you for your commitment to transparency, Commissioner. The department has provided an alarming lack of data. Which is necessary to accurately evaluate the staffing and budgetary needs of the department. The NUNIAS Federal Monitor's report outlines repeated data withholding from the monitor. And in the last Board of Corrections meeting, the board expressed frustration that data requested. On February first was not provided to the board. This data is necessary, as you know, to conduct oversight, to implement the reforms required. To reverse the very dangerous conditions of city jail facilities that you yourself went over. In the past, council has received a table of organization that shows the staffing requirement by command. Facility, rank, post, and tour. Are you willing to provide this information to the council?
So as I said in my testimony, I am committed to collaboration at all levels with this council and with the monitor and all other oversight bodies. And I really take issue with the report's representation regarding communication. The Department of Corrections continually provides voluminous amounts of information to the monitoring team. And on a nearly daily basis, we are engaged in phone calls and conversation with the monitoring team. To answer their questions or discuss efforts to improve conditions on Rikers Island. We and I remain committed to getting the information the monitor needs to assess compliance with the consent judgment. Additionally, the monitor has contact information for department leadership and is free to communicate with all staff at the department. As you know, I was with this department in two thousand sixteen, and I have known the monitor since two thousand sixteen and have regularly communicated with him. In less than three months, I have already had several virtual meetings and calls with the monitoring team. As well as one-on-one discussions with the monitor. Have we had disagreements? Yes, and that happens, and we've worked to resolve them. But the idea that there is a total breakdown of communication is a gross exaggeration. We understand that we need to communicate and build trust through consistent action. And if we ever expect our oversight bodies to understand our challenges and be partners in the changes. That is needed and are committed to maintaining open lines of communication, not only with you Chair Rivera, but other members of this committee. So you have that commitment from me, and I think that when we've met one-on-one and when we've met as a group with the committee. I've expressed that we need to make sure that we are collecting data that needs to be able to inform our operations. And I will be happy to regularly communicate that with you on an ongoing basis. And I've even recommended that we meet more frequently with you and I as chair, just so that you can get a real understanding in real time. As to what's going on in the department. I'm committed to that.
All right, so you are willing to provide the information that I requested to the council?
Yes.
Okay, great. So can the department, can the department provide a breakdown of staffing costs? To the extent possible disaggregated by correction staff assigned as escorts, ideally broken down. By escorts to medical appointments, council visits, court appearances, and any other programs or services?
Yeah, so we have to digest that request, right, to get it to you and the members of the committee. So let me work with my team and Deputy Commissioner Lyons, my general counsel staff, the First Staff, the Chief of Staff, and we'll get that to you.
Okay, the council is also interested in increasing the units of appropriation from the floor we have now. To more accurately reflect the seven program areas of the department. Are you willing to work with us on this measure?
Absolutely.
Great, okay. And thank you, Commissioner, for recognizing that programs and services are critical. What total dollar amount is allocated to provision of programmatic services? By external providers, and does this number represent an increase or decrease from last year?
Sure, so what I'll do is I have Deputy Commissioner Torres, who's our Deputy Commissioner for Programs and Community Partnerships. Along with probably assistance from DC Lions as necessary to respond to that.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Frances Torres. I'm the Deputy Commissioner for Programs and Community Partnerships. When we take a look at those contracted providers who were hired or retained by the department. As part of our jail-based targeted approach. We take a look at the total combined between those six organizations. For the first year is approximately fifteen million dollars. For year two is forty million dollars, and the same for year three.
Do you think the allocation is sufficient?
Madam Chair, at this time, you know too well, we're coming out of the pandemic. Our external partners were not able to commence when we had originally planned for them. Their reintegration to our operation commenced last June through July. And then once again, their presence on island was impacted. Between December twenty-third of last year through January twenty-fourth of this year. We have yet to fully assess if the allocated funding for the providers is sufficient enough.
Even historically, can you speak to that? Based on what you've seen, I mean, how do you track programming and how many people are participating in these programs?
Madam Chair, I will be more than happy to take a deeper dive into that. I began in my role as Deputy Commissioner in an acting capacity. Was not appointed to the role until September, not that I'm making any excuses. I really need time to analyze what was done prior to my tenure in that position and compare it to where we are. Will be more than happy to basically produce for you and all of the other council members at your committee. And provide you with a breakdown on that data.
Do you track how many people would like to participate in programming but are unable to do that due to lack of staff or other barriers?
Yes, we do. We actually do that tracking twofold. We do the tracking for any DOC staff service such as counseling, recreation, arts, law library. As well as for our external stakeholders, whether they are our large contracted providers. Or any provider onboarded by the department through a small purchase order. We do track what is offered as well as the participation.
How would you, I guess, rate or measure the participation? Would you say, based on a conversation I've had also previously with you, Commissioner? You said that numbers are up for participation in certain programs, especially regarding education. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so we do see more participation, obviously, as we get our external contract providers back. There is more opportunities for participation, so that's what has contributed to the increase. But I think when, as we develop our, excuse me, our management analysis and planning section. Part of the motivation for doing that is so that we can have proper program evaluation. To see if the programs that we do have in place are actually effective with the population that we have in our custody.
Well, we have, you know, spoken, as you said, to numerous advocates who have concerns about programming in certain populations within the jails themselves. Being not as included. And I'll mention the over two hundred and eighty women, transgender, and gender non-conforming people that are held on Rikers. Who do feel that they are often overlooked. And so what resources is the department and the city investing in proven diversion and anti-recidivism programs? Geared towards women and gender expansive people such as the Women's Prison Association. To significantly reduce the population of people at Rosie's?
No, thank you for that question, and I've met with the Women's Prison Association amongst dozens and dozens of other advocates. Especially those that are especially concerned about women that are in custody. And I can tell you that our programming at our women's facility, which is known as Rosie's, is very, very robust. And I visited Rosie, have visited there a few times myself. And have gone not only to visit the schoolhouses, the school area within Rosie's, but other programmatic service areas in Rosie's. And I find that the women that are there are highly engaged. DC Torres, can you just expand on some of the programming that we have at Rosie's?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. In addition to services that are afforded by our DOC staff members. We have two different specific contracted providers. One, Green Hope Services for Women, as well as Osborn Association. And for specific reentry and de-stretch planning. We have partnered through Mock J with the Women's Prison Association, Housing Works, and Youth Justice Network. Housing Works has expertise in working with the LGBTQ I-plus individuals. And will focus in the provision of food at Rosenstinger. Thank you.
What type of trainings do staff at DOC receive to serve the LGBTQ plus people that are held at Rikers? Specifically the TGNC and B community? And what amount of your budget is allocated for these types of training?
So Madam Chair, if I may, I don't know if the committee is aware that as a department. We have not only embarked in additional training, but also created a robust unit. And it is led by an executive director with specific number of staff that are deployed not only to Rosenstinger, but also to other facilities. I don't have necessarily the budget amount. I don't know if my partner DC Lions has.
No, at this time, we don't have a discrete budget within the department's budget for this unit or this initiative. But we can drill down and get back to you in terms but we can drill down and get back to you in terms of looking, you know, line by line at program, at specific training, number of staff that attend, and the staff assigned to the unit to get back to you as to what that cost would be for us.
That would be important, and that would argue timely considering the budget hearing, so I appreciate that. So in terms of the last budget hearing, where I asked a few questions of Correctional Health Services on March twenty-first regarding medical appointments, how many people over the last year on Rikers needed medical care while in custody?
I may have to get back with you with that number, Madam Chair. I may not have that number readily available, but I will get it back to you and just also consult with my CHS partners if you don't mind.
That would be ideal. I mean, on March twenty-first, I asked these questions to Correctional Health Services, specifically to Dr. Patty Yang, who I've worked with in the past, who I have respect for in the work that she does. So knowing that we still don't have those numbers, I would very much appreciate you getting them as soon as possible. Do you know how many people on Rikers could be deemed to have a chronic illness or need daily medical supervision? And are they able to make their appointments? And do they have an idea of the cost associated with daily treatment versus being transferred to a hospital facility?
So let me get back with you on that, Madam Chair, as well. We're taking notes of your very detailed questions, and I'll make sure that our team follows up with you and as well as engage CHS in the response to you.
Okay, again, I did ask these questions of them, so we'll make sure that you have them so that way we can have that data as soon as possible. Do you know the average wait time in the clinic for a detainee to see a medical professional? How do you track missed medical appointments? You know how many missed medical appointments occurred because there were no corrections officers available to escort the detainee?
So to your, Madam Chair, to your first question, the average wait time in the clinics approximately about eight minutes. So we do track the clinic wait time. I'll have to follow up with you regarding a specific number on missed appointments. I think it might be better for you to see that in time intervals rather than just me giving you an arbitrary number like that.
Do you know how many of the missed medical appointments occurred though because there were no corrections officers to escort the person?
We'd have to follow up with you with that question.
All right, well, the department is planning to spend fourteen point six million dollars this fiscal year and another one point six million next fiscal year on medical evaluations contracts to assist in getting staff back to work. How are you measuring the success of this program? And how many staff are you expecting to return by the end of the fiscal year?
So I don't have a forecast of how many staff will return by the end of the fiscal year because there's a lot that goes into why many of these members are out. I can tell you that over thirteen hundred staff have come back from sick, and that has had a positive impact. It's not where I want us to be. We still have a lot of staff that is out. We can speak to money that was spent last year regarding medical evaluations. As you know, that predates my tenure for DC Lions. Can you just share?
Sure, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Chair. So that new need was broken down into two components. There was the sick hall initiative we did with Mount Sinai through the support of H and H Health and Hospitals that totaled nine million dollars, and that engagement has since ceased. And the remainder of the funds over for this fiscal year, and I think we need to reevaluate next fiscal year, also with H and H and a separate provider, was for enhanced assessment to our health management division and assessing uniform medical evaluations.
And I will also just add to that, like I said in my testimony, H and D, our health management division, which is in a business unit, is going under evaluation. And there are, there are issues that need to be addressed there so that they enhance their ability to manage our staff when they're out.
As this is a one-time expense according to the budget, is this program to address the underlying issues in staff management or just a response to the current crisis?
It was a response to the current crisis.
Is there not personnel or specific individuals inside of the department that already do this work?
There is, but due to the, in the health management division, but due to the volume of evaluations that needed to occur as our sick rate escalated as a result of the pandemic and the Omicron surge in the winter, our assistance was needed from external providers to get us through that.
How will the medical evaluations function with the department's existing policy for staff out sick as well as the department's health management division, the unit generally responsible for this function?
So, Madam Chair, I think in responding to that, I will say that do we have issues within the health management division that we're addressing, right? While at the same time, we had a volume of staff in the past that was historically out for a very long time. When we did the medical evaluation through the Mount Sinai contract, that contract actually did not solve that issue because what it ended up doing in real time was keeping staff out longer than necessary so that we can get them back to work. So that change, and even that change in our policy, where if somebody in this needs to be out for one day or two days and immediately come back to work, that was what, that is what actually got us, I think, to thirteen hundred in addition to peer-to-peer engagement with staff that was being out. So, you know, I think a lot of these, a lot of what you're talking about regarding the staffing, out being out sick and staffing issues in general have been longstanding problems that we're addressing.
How many investigations into sick leave abuse and AWOL have you initiated since January twenty twenty-two?
I'd have to get back with you with that exact number. But what I can tell you is as it relates to staff absenteeism, there has been little accountability historically to really address that issue. And there's a lot of moving pieces to it. I'm happy to have a more detailed offline conversation about it so that you can get a keen understanding of what was going on at the time historically and how we need to move forward into the future to better manage the staff as it relates to them being out sick. Part of that is support, as I explained earlier. The Office of Labor Relations Employee Assistant Program was virtually eliminated from this department. Why that happened, I don't know, but we have brought that back. But part of it is also accountability in holding people accountable if they are deemed by our medical staff that they should be back at work and they're not.
From what I understood, there was a process put in place, and I thought at least by the end of the last calendar year. And I know that Ms. Serena Townsend was involved. I realize she's no longer with the department. Do you know how many staff members you've suspended for AWOL since January?
I don't have that number with me, but I can get it back to you.
Okay.
Get it to you. And I think it might be helpful for us to have a conversation either with yourself, with the committee, just to go into the details of understanding what that AWOL process was like. Just to provide greater clarity.
Okay, I'm sure that the committee will appreciate that. I'm just gonna ask you another question, and I want to get, there are, a lot of my colleagues have their hands up, and I want to make sure we get to them. So there is also an additional ten percent of staff who are on medically restricted duty and are unable to work directly with people in incarceration, often because of disciplinary proceedings. The federal monitor also reports that, and, you know, regardless of how we feel about the report, let's state it for what it is. The federal monitor also reports that investigations and trial staff or DOC staff assigned to disciplinary proceedings are vacant, and as a result, these proceedings have been delayed. So you said you've reviewed over three hundred cases in the disciplinary backlog. Do you know how many cases remain?
So I can give you an approximate number, but I don't want you to hold me to it. I can get you a more accurate number following up. I want to say when I did the agency review, they were approximately, at that time, communicated to me that there were approximately thirty, thirty-seven hundred cases in backlog at the Office of Administrative Trials and Hearings. I believe that number has come down approximately now to about thirty-five hundred, maybe thirty-four hundred, but I can follow up with you to get you an exact number. And there's a number of issues for that backlog. I think the monitor is correct. Staffing is one piece of that. But there was a volume of cases that were submitted for a formal disciplinary process that were not addressed in the prior administration. And like I said earlier in my statement, there were cases that I posed with disciplinary process that went back to two thousand and seventeen.
So what are the resources that are being devoted to cleaning the backlog, clearing the backlog of cases pending formal discipline for inappropriate use of the force?
So we have used contract attorneys to supplement our current trials workforce. We are still, we're also very actively recruiting for agency attorneys to join the department as well to address that issue. We have, via the remedial order, are looking to address four hundred cases specific to use of force that the monitor has identified, and we're going through that process now. I don't, I don't think I missed anything. General Counsel, do you have anything to add?
Yes, sir.
From what I understand, that contract attorneys are only for this year. Can you clear, can they clear the backlog by the end of the fiscal year?
Well, I think realistically, clearing that backlog by the end of the fiscal year is not a reasonable expectation. I'm just being upfront about that. I think that there's a lot of things that go into the OVE process. There are pre-trials that go into negotiations. It does not only involve us, it also involves attorneys that represent the respondents in those cases. These cases are heard by judges that have to write lengthy responses regarding that. What I will tell you is OVE has significantly increased its capacity to hear cases, and that has been very, very helpful as well. But I don't think it will be clear by the end of the fiscal year. I just want to be fair about that.
So you're looking at potentially having contract attorneys for the next fiscal year? We can get into that, just two more questions, and then my colleague-
Counselor just wants to add something, ma'am.
Chair Rivera, thank you. If I may, just to clarify, the contract attorney strategy is to supplement the full-time hiring strategy. So the understanding that it takes time to hire someone full-time, onboarding, doing that recruitment, we want, we don't want to wait for that moment. So we're bringing on contract attorneys to bridge that gap. The hope would be ultimately we have all full-time attorneys, but until that time, we'd like to leverage the use of contract attorneys so that we're not losing any time and that we're getting through these cases as effectively as we can. Thank you.
All right, in two thousand and twenty-two jails on Rikers, OBCC and EMTC, they were slated to close, but they were reopened during COVID-nineteen. And consolidating operations and closing these jails will alleviate the force overtime that has strained the officers who are coming to work and improve delivery of services by minimizing unstaffed posts. So as our city returns to more normal operations, is the department looking at reclosing these jails? And how much could that save in operation?
I think it's hard for me to comment on that right now, given our current state, that our population of our incarcerated population has increased and has not met the population forecast that was originally given out by Mock J under the previous administration. And in addition to that, we have to presume that we just came out of an Omicron surge. We have to presume that we, there might possibly be another one. In addition to that, as I've said in my statement, our length of stay have been quite long so because of the court system, how it was impacted by COVID-nineteen. So that's another factor to take into consideration. But we're evaluating how we move forward regarding EMTC and OBCC as far as their ability to operate. And we can continue to keep you abreast on those, on that progress.
Absolutely. I know you said along, four times longer than, for example, LA. My last question is about RMAS and ending solitary confinement. Under the previous administration, the November financial plan baseline, six point seven million and ninety positions for RMAS implementation, the first step toward ending solitary confinement. However, under this administration, the implementation has stalled. How are you planning to meet your July one goal of implementation with existing resources and ensure that there will be appropriate staff to comply with the HALT Act? And what is the cost to house someone in each type of restrictive housing unit, including ESH levels one to four, secure, punitive segregation, et cetera?
Madam Chair, we can get back to you on the process, but I just want to just address, I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't frame it that this administration stalled RMAS. RMAS was not in place when I took over. It had already been delayed. And when I reviewed what was the then prior administration's plan for RMAS, I had disagreements with how it was laid out. I think in speaking to advocates and other person in defender services, as well as members of the Board of Corrections, they had some disagreement with how that original plan was going to be operationalized. We need a restrictive housing plan that is under one facility, which is in GRBC. So the delay in implementation really centers around some construction, things that need to take place in those housing units, staff training, so that staff, uniformed staff can be trained specifically in how to manage the population. We're recruiting staff so that there's a different leadership structure regarding our restricted housing plan model so that we're consistent throughout all the levels so that we are helping individuals unlearn, responding to incidents of conflict in a violent way, while at the same time being able to separate them from the general population for a temporary time being while they receive treatment. In addition to that, our program staff has done a comprehensive plan for programming in a restorative housing units in addition to ongoing recruitment of clinical and social worker staff that is going to be embedded in these housing units. DC Torres, did I miss anything, or?
I think you got it all, Commissioner. I would like to elaborate, if I may. Madam Chair, something that we need to keep in mind as we move into RMAS is that the population potentially arriving to RMAS really needs to be engaged in individualized as well as group. And for that reason, when it comes to our counseling unit, we have increased the staffing, but I would like to give you some clear guidance and some information. We no longer have just correctional counselors levels one and two who have focused in the past on the provision of social services and one-on-one. We are also, in addition to the number of program counselors who since two thousand and fifteen have been trained on age-appropriate, evidence-based programming, we have increased the number that will match the number of housing areas that are designed for RMAS. We have also onboarded social workers, and it's the first time we have such title, as well as intervention specialists. These type of counseling members are needed in order for us to fully operate RMAS. Thank you.
Thank you. I would say, Commissioner Alina, the only thing you're missing today are the numbers. So you owe me that.
Yeah.
People on the committee. And I'm looking forward to checking in with you more frequently. I know you brought that up in a phone call. I also know, well, I went, I acknowledge you've been joined by Councilmember Ariola. And I would just say that the, the, the information is so, so important. I know, you know, people, reporters and people from the media have also requested some of this information, and they weren't given it. They had to spoil it. So I want us to have open lines of communication to figure this out so we can actually have some successes in the near future. This is a matter of life and death. I know my colleagues have a ton of questions, so I'm going to turn it over to the committee council so we can go in the order of hands raised. And thanks again for being here and answering my question.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I will now call on council members in the order they have used the Zoom raise hand function. If you'd like to ask a question and you have not yet used the Zoom raise hand function, please do so now. Council members, please keep your questions to five minutes. The sergeant-at-arms will keep a timer and will let you know when your time is up. You should begin once I've called on you and the sergeant has announced that you may begin. First, you will hear from Councilmember Stevens, followed by Councilmembers Caban, Carr, Schulman, Osay, Christian, and Powers, and Haney. Councilmember Stevens, you may begin.
I'm starting now.
Good morning, everyone. I just have a few questions. I'll ask the questions first, and then if you guys could answer, that'll be very helpful. Um, just because I know we have limited time. So according to the Daily News report, found that staff who were at work were frequently not at their posts. And the New Yes Federal Monitor noted that multiple incidents had with, um, to identify where staff were off post, leading to serious violence among the incarcerated individuals. And the facilities did not reconcile the daily rosters to ensure that all the staff who were present were assigned to their post. How is the department ensuring that people are actually at their assigned posts? What are the consequences for people who are not and for their supervisors who do not make sure that they're at their post? And then I have another question is if methods of encouraging staff to come back to work are not successful, do you anticipate working with the mayor to use executive order to require staff to return to work or face termination?
Um, thank you for your question, um, council member. Um, first regarding staff that are not on post, I will tell you that if, when staff are, um, identified or caught being off post and not being off post, there is a disciplinary process to take corrective action to address that issue. In addition to that, we-
And could you, can you tell us what that process is?
Uh, well, the process, it depends on, on the situation. It could range from a corrective action to formally disciplining someone. Um, there could be a, a process where we might see more significant discipline than maybe an employee is willing to accept. And then there's a formal Ove process that the department will go through where our agency attorneys would represent the department's position. And the respondent, in this case, the staff member, would be represented by counsel. And the arguments will be heard by an Ove judge. General Counsel, did I summarize that correctly?
And what happens with supervisors? Because they're supposed to be supervising and making sure people are-
Yeah, sorry. It's not just for correctional officers. So if we find that our first-line supervisors or our middle-management supervisors are not doing their duties, then we hold them accountable as well. And that same process would exist for them. Uh, so it's, it's constant follow-up and accountability.
Okay. And so the next question I asked was around, uh, what, like, the, are you ready to have executive orders to get people back to work? Um, and if not terminate them, what is, what is that process looking like? Because I know we've been talking about like the higher, um, rates of absence of your staff. So what are we doing to address that?
Sure. So I'll let my general counsel answer the legal question regarding using executive orders. But I think, um, what we, what we do have in place, I can tell you, is a disciplinary process. And in that disciplinary process, we can take actions up until including termination. If we feel that we can prove that someone is abusing sick leave or violating some other rules and standards that we have in order to take corrective action, uh, General Counsel.
Yeah, if I may add, um, there are circumstances under which, um, an executive order by the mayor that addresses certain issues or, or suspends certain provisions, you know, could be a tool. We saw that last fall when, uh, prior administration, uh, issued an executive order discussing the issue of suspensions for officers who are in an AWOL status. Um, whether a executive order is used going forward is a, a decision for City Hall to make. Um, but here at the department, as the commissioner said, um, we have tools that are already at our disposal through the disciplinary process. Um, but also through the peer-to-peer communications to encourage staff to, to return to work, uh, those who are out sick. Uh, so there are tools that we will use at our own disposal, whether that, um, escalates to a need for, uh, an executive order if the discussion the agency would, uh, need to have at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one last question. With the high rates of violence among people in custody, violence towards staff and use of force, what is being done to prevent rap violence rather than responding to it?
So I think there's a number of things. So first, I want to say, and at least the calendar year to date, assault on our uniform staff are down nineteen percent. And assaults on staff that are non-uniform are down forty-six percent. In addition to that, our use of force engagement is down twenty-five percent. Uh, we need, we need to sustain that throughout the year and into the future. And I think the other thing that I talked about within my testimony was a return to just practical things to keep people safe, like tactical search operations to remove contraband from our facilities. So we've begun doing tactical search operations and I can tell you that we've recovered, um, we've recovered two eight, two hundred and eighty-nine contraband weapons during our tactical search operations, which began in early February and continue to this day. In addition to our facility search operations and unscheduled searches, which have also been ongoing as well.
Thank you. Um, and I look forward to having a more in-depth debrief, um, with, um, Chair Rivera as well. Because, you know, there was a lot of questions that I felt wasn't answered, so.
And Councilwoman, uh, if I could just also add, in addition to security operations, I also mentioned in my testimony that we expanded the use of credible messengers as violence interrupters in our young adult population. Though it's not solely a security response, but really a holistic programmatic response to address violence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Caban.
Time starts now.
Thank you. Uh, thank you to the committee chair, committee staff, um, and everybody else that's here. Uh, before asking a few questions that I have, I just want to put, um, just three points in context. I think context is, is important. Um, the commissioner, commissioner, you testified, quote, "When someone dies in custody, it's a public health issue." And I just want to say that Mr. Diaz choked to death on an orange because there was an officer in the bubble and no officer on the floor intervened. And that's not a public health issue, that's a negligence issue. It's a grossness management issue. That's an issue of apathy and the bare minimum was having an officer on that floor. Um, and related to that, uh, you testified about the progress being made on officers returning, uh, to work. And your statement was that thirteen hundred staff returned to work since January first. And it seems like a red herring. Over the Christmas holiday, several thousand more staff called in sick and they are the thirteen hundred who came back. So currently, according to the March sixteen monitors reports, thirty percent of the staff remain out on sickly, sick leave or medical modified duty. In other words, the absentee rate is virtually unchanged from last fall. Uh, and the third piece that I wanted to, to highlight was that you also testified, quote, "In less than three months, um, over three hundred cases were moved through." But one of your first acts as commissioner was to fire the independent oversight officer who is working through, uh, the over two thousand plus outstanding incidents. And then the New Yes Court Order states that you were not allowed to replace her without a, quote, "bonafide reason." And the monitor report states that there was no bona fide reason. Uh, and the loss of trust in your department that created shouldn't be swept under the rug. Uh, but the questions that I have for you are, OBCC has many units for solitary confinement, which the department has committed to replacing with alternatives. Can you tell us how many people are detained at OBCC today? And if there are plans to relocate the people currently held there to other jails, how many staff are currently assigned to OBCC? And then I have similar questions for, uh, two other facilities. Can you tell us how many people are currently detained at EMTC? And how many staff are assigned to that jail? Uh, and then finally, can you tell us how many people are currently detained at RMSC and how many staff are assigned to that jail?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Caban, for your question. I'll have the Chief of Department respond to your census questions.
Good morning. Uh, regarding the question of the amount of person in custody that has assigned to, uh, OBCC as per five AM census, uh, today, the census at OBCC is four hundred and fifty. Uh, as per our five AM census, AM census, the census at the Rose M Singer Center, uh, today is two hundred and seventy-four.
EMTC.
On the EMTC.
And, and the staff, please?
We'll, we'll, we'll get you that.
We're going to get you the staff number. We'll just give you the census with EMTC.
With the Eric M Taylor sentence, as per our five AM census this morning, ma'am, the census is five hundred and nine.
And then DC Lions is going to respond to your staffing question.
Okay. So right now we're operating. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, uh, Councilmember, for your question. So right now we're operating OBCC and EMTC as a combined facility in terms of their management. So the number I have for you now would give the number of staff assigned to that combined facility. But I can, we can follow up with you in terms of who belongs to OBCC and who is assigned EMTC. So that combined staffing number right now for the two facilities, all ranks, is seven hundred and eleven. And then for the Rose M Singer Center, the total assigned heads are, uh, four hundred and sixty-six. All ranks.
Thank you. And, um, in, in January, the department reported over sixty-seven hundred missed medical appointments. But on January thirty-first, there were only twenty-eight people in the city jails with confirmed COVID cases. At this moment, what do you believe is a greater risk to health and safety of incarcerated people? COVID transmission or failure to consistently meet minimum standards like transport to medical assignments, to medical appointments, rather?
Well, we can, our, our positivity in transmission rate has been significantly reduced. I mean, we have been leveraging staffing to make sure that all individuals go to their medical appointments. We can give you a more updated number regarding medical appointments. Um, I think the chair had also added information as well. So we'll make sure we get that to you.
And, and say just again, for context, I have visited the jail many times. In my last two visits, I spoke to many incarcerated folks who literally went weeks without broken bones, being attended to or mended. Uh, I spoke to somebody who self-harmed just to be able to put, be put on suicide watch, to be able to see a mental health expert. And so this is a very dangerous and acute crisis that we're seeing and experiencing.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Carr.
Time starts now.
Thank you so much, Chair Rivera. Thank you, Commissioner, for, uh, being here today and testifying. Uh, you have a difficult mission under, you know, normal circumstances and these are very challenging times. And I, I think what we're hearing a lot, uh, throughout the course of your testimony and, and questions from my colleagues is that there seems to be an issue with staffing. And, and I guess what I'm, what I'm curious to know from you is even if all budgeted positions that are vacant are filled, and even if you are able to reduce, um, those who are out, uh, sick at the moment significantly, do you feel like there's sufficient staff headcount and uniform headcounts, uh, to, to operate Rikers safely?
So I'll, I'll respond this way. I think that, you know, we did, they did close EMTC and OBCC. We've lost twenty percent of our staff since two thousand and nineteen. And we're currently working with OMB to assess what is the right operating levels needed to operate the, the Department of Corrections. And that is ongoing right now. Um, we can follow up more specifically with you regarding that question. But we're going through that exercise to realize what are our proper operating levels to be able to deliver services to the people that are in our custodial care.
And what, what is the, the current, you know, incarcerated population to staffing ratio? Both, you know, overall and, and specifically with respect to uniform headcount?
Um, I, I have to do, do you have the ratio by any chance? If not, then, okay. So I'll get, I'll get you the officer to detainee ratio. We'll follow up with you with what that ratio number is. But I wanted to share with you, Councilmember, that it's really not just about how many officers to how many offenders we may have in any particular time in custody. As you may be well aware, we have outdated facilities whose footprint impacts the ability to deploy staff. We are going to embark on a restrictive housing model that calls for, based on the board's ruling, for out-of-cell time of a minimum of ten hours in level one and twelve hours in level two. And even the expert that we hired at the recommendation of the monitor regarding classification and custody management requires us to have significant rich staffing ratios, both uniform and both non-uniform staff, in order to make sure that the people in those restrictive housing units who are prone and have a history of committing violence, that we can keep everyone there safe, which is our responsibility. So we're going through that process now to be able to address that issue to know what our headcount should be.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that you're going through an assessment with OMB because there have been significant programmatic additions uh, to your department. And I think that that means that there needs to be, you know, upticks in staffing as well across the board. And that's not budgeted for. And, and I think my, what I'm told is that the ratio is, is fifty to one. And that's right, assuming that the officers are, are actually there present and, and fit for duty. And so I'm just concerned that, you know, we're not, we're not tackling the need to increase the headcount at Rikers in, in your budget proposals. Because I think if we're going to operate, uh, a secure facility, a safe facility for those incarcerated and for those working there, uh, that's really necessary. And I, I really hope that we get answers on that sooner rather than later. Do you have a timeline about those discussions with OMB?
Uh, what I will tell you, sir, is that they're ongoing. Um, and as soon as we get more, um, definitive of what that numbers will look like, we'll, we'll be, we'll make them available.
I appreciate that because, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the numbers for the violence among inmates, for violence against staff, and it's, it's really deeply disconcerting. Uh, it's nice to hear that, you know, the, the calendar year-to-date numbers seem to be improving, but that's against a backdrop of consistent increases year to year. Um, and so I'm just really concerned about the safety of all those, uh, who are there. Uh, and I just look forward to trying to see some improvements, uh, over the course of this fiscal year and then the following.
Absolutely. And you have my commitment to doing that. And I will tell you, like I shared in my testimony, we went, have gone back to doing really practical correctional practices that were absent and not existent for a long time over the last one to two years. Something as simple as conducting tactical search operations, moving away from housing by gang affiliation and making sure that our housing units are more blended. Um, having a, a restorative restrictive housing program as we, we operate that on July first, that actually is meaningful and transparent and addresses root causes of violence within the population.
And my last question is, you know, there's significant amount of, uh, of, of this budget that's going to be dedicated to OT. And I've heard of, you know, this triple shift phenomenon where, among the correction staff. Do you, what is, what is the current number of, of individuals on staff working triple shifts? And, and what are you doing to, to reduce that?
So we have, um, virtually eliminated triple shifts from where they were when I got here on day one. So the, the triple shifts, I haven't seen individuals on triple shifts for some time now, I'll, Councilmember. But we can follow up with you and, and, and get you more detailed responses.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Councilmember Schulman.
Time starts now.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Chair Rivera, uh, my, uh, the committee staff and, uh, my colleagues. Uh, and thank you, Commissioner, uh, for being here. So, um, as, you know, healthcare is really important to me. As, you know, when we came and took the tour of Rikers, I didn't get an answer about, um, what's being done with mental health issues uh, for the, for the, those who are incarcerated. It's fairly well-known that a number of those incarcerated have mental health issues. Um, based on data from last year, about fifty-two percent of the Rikers Island population have been diagnosed with some type of mental illness. There was a plan, um, that came up in the previous administration to expand, um, specific units for people with mental illness at Rikers Island called Program for Accelerated Clinical Effectiveness, also known as PACE. I want to know what the status of that program is.
So I, 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 I remember our visit and thank you for visiting with us, Councilmember. And I can, I can follow you up with more detailed plans, but I will tell you that I did visit the patient units. When I first arrived here as Commissioner, I, I toured with them. And I did support expanding those units. So I think there's some construction issues that we have to do with expansion. There's training issues related to the officers. Chief Stooks, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that regarding PACE?
Yes, the, uh, units that are currently open or in operation is, uh, clinical staff assigned to those units. Uh, with regards to expanding the patients, that will require some modification to our existing infrastructure. And of course, as the last few years pertaining to staffing challenges, we would have to evaluate to ensure that we have the adequate amount of staff training to support those units in addition to the, uh, clinical staff, which will come under the purview of CHS.
Has, has money been requested in the budget to expand PACE? Because pay, the PACE programs in other parts of the country have been shown to be very successful in reducing violence and in helping those with mental illness. And Commissioner, to your point that you made earlier, the, the length of stay is getting longer, which means that people with mental health issues, it just exacerbates their conditions.
No, I, I agree. And I think part of, of the length, what contributed to that length of stay, as you know, has been the fact that, uh, of course, we're not running optimally, right? To no fault of their own, there was a global pandemic. Um, what I will tell you is in, in our first month in January, we have been doing a significantly much better job of court production. So in addition to video court, we have increased our percentages of court production to get people to court so that we can make sure that we deal our process through the system. I've also worked with state docs to increase the capacity for those that are sentenced to make sure that we're sending them to New York State Doc's custody as quickly as we can. But again, you, you have my commitment to relooking at PACE and seeing, um, where we can expand. And I have a great working relationship with CHS and work with Patsy. And I have a great working relationship with C H S and work with Patsy on that issue as well.
All right. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Osay.
Time starts now.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Chair Rivera. Uh, I just want to preface everything that I'm about to say by, by saying that there are other agencies in the city um, that are receiving, uh, cuts and also have staffing shortages. Um, and I've been on a couple of preliminary budget hearings, and, uh, there have been far less people in the room, um, that have had answers to, to some questions that, uh, are similar to the questions that have been asked by my colleagues and the chairwoman. So it's kind of disappointing to see, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine of you on this hearing, uh, and not being able to provide answers to the questions that we are asking. So the question I have for you, because I've been on a couple of these preliminary budget hearings where agencies are receiving cuts, um, the DOC is not one of them. How do we, as a city council, vote in good faith on a budget that increases the DOC's budget when you don't have answers that prove, uh, the efficacy of the programs that you want to continue doing?
Well, Councilmember, thank you for your question, and, and I'm, I'm just as concerned as you are. I think we have to understand, similar like how the federal monitor has pointed out, this has been decades of, decades of failure, um, that I'm trying, that I'm going to address. And I've only, I've been here less than three months. Some of the questions that were asked were, were very strictly within financial to evaluate the value of certain things, and we need to get back on, to responding to that question to specific members that have asked about that. But I think when we think about the system that we inherited in this administration, there were a lot of problems that we inherited, and I, and I'm accepting that. I'm not making excuses for that. And it's going to take significant investment and effort to not only turn around our operations, but to make sure that we don't transition this, this, this disorder into the Bro-based Jail Plan. And that's what I'm focused on. So it's, it's ending our punitive segregation, restorative housing model, um, making sure that we have staff that can bring patients to their appointments and making sure that we're tracking that. The, the tracking of these things did not exist for years. And that's why, under my direction, we're developing a management house and planning unit so that we can do proper program evaluation, so that we can respond, not at, not at just hearings, but on any time somebody has a request from the council, the Board of Corrections, and others, that we can give answers to these questions.
But you weren't even able to give Councilmember Carr a timeline of when you would have some answers to many of the questions that were being asked, but I will move on. Um, I do want to also ask, what are the obstacles that, that you are experiencing that have been preventing you or making it difficult for you to have more transparency on the numbers uh, to so many of the questions that we are asking this afternoon?
I, I don't, I don't want to say that there, there are obstacles. Um, what I will say is that the department just really didn't operate in a transparent environment for a long time.
Okay, and, and for the record.
Management Analysis and Planning Unit, so that we can make sure that not only the data we currently collect, but data that we may be not collecting is informing our decision-making.
Okay, and for the record, you believe that an increase in the DOC budget would fix all of the problems that you've been dealing with for the past ten years?
I, I think it goes a long way to, to moving us forward.
Okay.
We're still assessing what other needs we may have. Again, I've been here less than three months.
Okay. Uh, another question that I do have is, Commissioner, how, how much is spent, um, on, on each detainee at Rikers?
So the number that we have, uh, for the cost is approximately, I want to say in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Well, that's a lot of money. Um, and I, I want to ask, with, with that much money going to each detainee, how is it possible that, you know, already this year, two detainees have already died, uh, in Rikers with that much money going towards, uh, each detainee? Where is that money going? How is it protecting the detainees that are there? Uh, that is a sizable amount of, of taxpayer dollars.
No, I, I agree with you. It is, it is a sizable amount. Um, those current, um, deaths are under investigation, so I'm not in a position to really talk into detail about, about those specific circumstances. Uh, but when you look at the size of our department, um, the, I, like I said, the inefficiency of our, the layout of our facilities, the increase in, of our incarceration population, which has not met the population projections of the past administration, there's a cost to all of that. And I think also, as we think about incarceration, we are the lowest per capita incarcerated city compared to other, other United States. Um, I think we're about sixty-four per one hundred thousand people. And in, in the United States, it's, it's over two hundred and fifty per one hundred thousand. So we have come down significantly in incarceration, in our incarceration of our population. And that's also going to affect the size of our budget number as it, as it will increase per person.
Okay, I just want to, want to end with saying that this is a preliminary budget hearing. You knew there was, this was coming up. The lack of answers is absolutely ridiculous, especially if you want to see an increase in your budget. Um, and that's, that's all I do have to say, but, but thank you for, for being here to testify.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Christian, followed by the following councilmembers, Powers, Hanif, and Naxis.
Time starts now.
Thank you so much, Chair, uh, and the committee for this hearing. Uh, Commissioner, I want to tell you, I am disgusted by the black hole of civil rights and human rights abuses that is Rikers Island under your leadership, too. Rikers Island is a black hole of civil rights and human rights abuses with three deaths in Rikers Island this year alone. A culture of violence, thousands of officers calling out sick, thousands of missed medical appointments. And you're going to tell me that this is a crisis that you inherited? Yet, under your leadership, the Nunes monitor specifically said that the department remains trapped in a state of persistent dysfunctionality, and the complex is unstable and unsafe. And you come in front of this committee with no answers to basic information, and not anything that's secret, but it's been public record in the media for a long time. And we're being told, as my colleague, Councilmember Osay, said, with the whole team from DOC here, we're not able to get any in for basic information on a number of topics that you should be prepared for, and you're defending your budget. So my first question to you is, do you, as the Commissioner, and does this agency believe that it's under a legal obligation to comply with the Nunes consent decree? Yes or no?
Uh, yes, I think we should be complying with the consent.
Thank you. Next question is, if, if given that's your legal obligation, do you believe it's your legal obligation to comply with the recommendations and findings of the monitor Steve Martin appointed by the Nunes consent decree? Yes or no?
So I will tell you that I've had numerous conversations with the monitor. I think many of those recommendations are things that we have talked about, and we have a lot of agreement.
Commissioner, it's, it's, I'm sorry, it's a yes or no question. Do you believe you have a legal obligation to comply with the recommendations of the monitor appointed by a federal court?
Uh, Councilmember Christian, uh, thank you for your question. Um, the court itself has not directed, uh, the city to adopt those recommendations rather, following the report, the court issued in order to have the parties, uh, report back through the monitor on the progress of assessing and, and adopting those recommendations.
Understood, understood. With all due respect, I understand that. But you do admit that you have a legal obligation to comply with the consent decree. And you do admit that pursuant to that consent decree, a federal court monitor was appointed. Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. In January, Commissioner, you issued a news release that says one thousand officers have returned back to work, marking a quote "significant shift in the right direction." Yet, the monitor pursuant to the Nunes consent decree said that, despite staff members' return to work, more than two thousand remain unavailable at this time. On top of that, in January of this year, six, there were six thousand medical appointments that were missed. Do you believe that incarcerated people have a basic civil right to access adequate medical care?
Yes, I believe everybody should have access to adequate medical care. I wish they had it in their communities.
And how do you, and how do you, and, and, well, we're talking about Rikers in particular under your, under your watch. How do you explain whether incarcerated people's basic civil right to adequate medical care is being met once there are six thousand missed medical appointments in January? Do you believe that their civil rights are being met?
I believe that we're doing everything we can to make sure that those that need to see medical attention are getting it, and we've increased staffing in order to make sure that we meet the needs for medical appointments that are scheduled.
Well, six thousand medical appointments missed, uh, I don't think qualifies as doing the best that you can in an agency. My next question for you is, the monitor also indicated that an investigator, Serena Townsend, um, had been dismissed, uh, fired, sorry, um, after being asked to get rid of two thousand discipline cases against officers within a hundred days. Did you notify the monitor, uh, of her termination?
I did notify the monitor, and I did not ask her to dismiss two thousand cases.
The monitor's report specifically states that it had not been alerted to her termination. Now, my next question for you.
The personnel decision, and it was among several leadership personnel decisions that I made since joining the department.
Thank you.
Based on the monitor's report.
Next question. Thank you. I just wanted to ask, yes or no, the monitor?
For a long time.
The report specifically states you had it noted the monitor. My next question for you is, between July twenty and July twenty twenty-one, your report from DOC states that eleven people were transferred to ICE custody pursuant to detainers. Did you have a judicial warrant for any of these eleven people?
Uh, Councilmember Christian, um, with respect to the issue of ICE and detainers, um, there are specific protocols in place at the Department of Correction and the review process.
I'm just looking for, I, I, I understand, I'm just looking for a yes or no. Did you have a judicial warrant for the eleven people who were transferred to ICE custody?
I can't speak to that directly, but I can say that the practices that we have are consistent with the.
Thank you. I look forward, and I'd ask the agency to please provide the information as to whether eleven people who were transferred to ICE custody had a judicial warrant for their transfer. I look forward to receiving that information. My next question is, the monitor under the Nunes report has specifically reported a deeply troubling lack of open and transparent communication between the Corrections Department and the monitoring team, that they're unable to receive basic, that the department had stopped tracking data on absenteeism, is that, and that the monitoring team is not receiving data. In fact, the direct quote from the report is, "The monitoring team is incredibly disappointed to report that it has lost confidence that it has access to all of the relevant and reliable information necessary to perform its duties." Are you providing, as an agency, all the information that the monitor is requesting?
So we will provide information to the monitor on a daily basis. Um, General Counsel, can you just talk about the number of, I mean, volumes of information that we provide the monitor? But I will, I will also say that there are points in time when there are things that are not specific to the consent judgment, and sometimes we need to consult not only with department, uh, legal staff, but with the law department on those issues.
The federal monitor appointed by the consent decree, which you testified earlier, has, is you're under legal, legal obligation to comply with. That monitor has stated that it is not able to receive the relevant and reliable information to perform its duties and has lost confidence in the relationship between the Corrections Department and the monitor pursuant, appointed pursuant to a federal court order. Despite that lack of communication, despite you testifying that you're under legal obligation to comply with the consent decree, the monitor states that it is that it has lost confidence in its ability to receive information to perform its responsibilities pursuant to that court order. We have no information on many things that we asked for today. You are spending more, over five hundred million dollars per, per incarcerated person at Rikers Island. Your budget has not been cut, and you come in front of this committee with little to no answers and want to say that, under your leadership, the situation at Rikers Island is being addressed and resolved in direct contravention of what the federal monitor has been stating. I find that shocking. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Powers.
Time starts now.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Rivera, and thank you, I just hear one of the department. Um, I, I had follow-up questions to, uh, what Councilmember Carr was asking about earlier, and I assume has been asked and discussed. Uh, you know, the central issue right here, uh, in my view, at Rikers Island right now, which I think is on near, is in near collapse, is the staffing issue and whether we have an appropriate handle on the staffing situation at Rikers Island right now, whether our budget addresses that, and what is the right solution here? Some are asking and recommending we hire more staff. I think many others, just like myself, believe we have a crisis in the existing staffing issues that needs to be addressed to get people back to work. I guess my, my, my question that Councilmember Carr, I think, was asking, and I want to ask more, maybe, maybe directly, is, do, do, does the agency believe right now, with the current headcount that it is budgeted for in this year, uh, if folks are showing up to work, that you have adequate staffing at, in our city jails?
I think what, what we're doing is, we have to also consider that we have rich staffing moving away from a new restrictive housing model that's going to require additional staff. And we're trying to assess how we're going to be able to do that while at the same time managing two facilities that were, were, were closed and had to be reopened because of the COVID nineteen pandemic.
So when does that assessment happen? Because, you know, I, I do share some of my colleagues' frustration that we're at a budget hearing, which is, and, and this is an agency that has had, whether, under, not, you know, under your tenure in the last first three months, and certainly in the last four years and beyond that, if, has had, has been an agency in crisis. And, uh, you know, we have been in the last year and plus been facing this question of what the adequate staffing levels are. So I guess is, when do we find out from the agency and O M B when you believe you have the adequate staffing or what your staffing needs are?
DC Lions.
Good afternoon, uh, Councilmember Powers. It's good to see you again. Uh, so the dialogue with O M B is ongoing right now, and the earliest we may have an answer would be the executive budget.
But you guys know, right? Like, I don't, I guess my question is, O M B is the, is, I believe, is the agency that's giving you the approval to go do hires or giving you needs. You, you, as the agency, have an understanding what your needs are. So I guess our question, my question, maybe restated again, is, what does the agency believe, even going into the conversations, O M B, are their staffing needs? Do you believe today you have, if everyone's showing up to work, the right amount of staff?
We're evaluating that.
Okay. So, I, you know, I, I don't have to harp on this point, but I think that you hear Councilmore Carr saying it, Councilor Krishnan, I'm sure Councilor Bear and others have raised this too, is this is the central issue facing an agency that is in turmoil right now. People are dying, staff has got, getting assaulted, and we have, and for any of us who have been there, uh, I've seen it firsthand, the sort of, some of the horrors there over the, over the last years. I guess, um, we would want to know, once again, and I don't, I, I'm just concerned we're going to get to the executive budget, and we're going to have the same answer, which is, how many staff does this agency need? We have folks who are going out there and asking for more staffing to address that need. We have many folks, I, I, again, I am one of them, who believe we should be doing, taking more steps to address that price, that crisis without adequate staffing up there today. And we're here at a budget hearing after all this time, and we can't get an answer about whether it's adequate, whether you need more, whether you need less, and when perhaps, what are the steps being taken furthermore to get the staffing back to where it should be? So I guess I ask maybe a different question is, um, you know, at the beginning of the tenure here in this administration, uh, the agency had repealed the previous sick policy for officers and staff, uh, to, in terms of how they handle, uh, uh, providing evidence or, and which doctors they use when it comes to that. Can you give us e- evidence of how that's working so far and whether that is, has assisted with people coming back to work?
So I think that it has assisted with people coming back to work. The prior policy kept our staff out longer than what was necessary, and we needed the staff to be able to come back to work. If they were experiencing something that was sickness, that they inquired the need for a, a medical doctor to intervene or help management division intervene, or help management divi- division could not handle the volume. Neither could obviously Mount Sinai, because Mount Sinai contract was in place, and didn't, it didn't get anybody back to work, right? So we have seen that, that a, a decrease in new sick go down four percent. I'd like it to go down more, but I've been here two and a half months only. So I think the change in that policy did, in addition to peer-to-peer intervention, get people out, come back to work.
Yeah, my fear is that it's not going to work over the long term, because it's providing more opportunities for people to continue to take time off relative to other policy. I do believe, you know, provided, uh, uh, sort of a harder stance on some of the stuff. But, um, I guess, I guess I just know this, and I'll hand it back to the Chair of Arrow. I appreciate giving me the time here, is, it is impossible to do a budget hearing and not have the central question asked, which is, or answer, which is, how much staff do you need during a staffing crisis? And, and I, it's, I feel a little bit, uh, disrespectful to the city council and us doing our jobs to be, you know, unprepared to answer that question, either from the administration side, from the DOC side, or from O M B's side. And so we will certainly look forward, I think, to the executive, uh, he, budget hearing. But, uh, we, you know, should be, be able to answer that question, I think, today. Uh, so with that, I'll hand it back to Chair Vera. I appreciate her giving me the time to ask questions.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Council-
Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Hanees.
Time starts now.
Thank you, Chairwoman Rivera. Good afternoon, everybody. I just need to echo the disgust and disappointment shared by my colleagues who spoke before me. I recognize, Commissioner, you're due to the seat, as are most of us in this committee, and we need answers because the folks in Rikers are constituents. Not having the answer to even the most basic question about the staffing ratio is pretty outrageous to me. This is not a good look, and the committee will proactively be following up for a line-by-line response to all the questions that went unanswered. So the city's jail employs more than 1.5 correction officers for every one incarcerated person. DOC has around 8,300 or a little over 8,300 uniform staffers. As of February, there were over 5,400 incarcerated people. This is a ratio that is more than six times higher than the national average. So I have a couple of questions. I'm going to ask them all at once. If you could just take the notes, take them down, and then respond. So first, how can you argue that DOC is understaffed when this is the case? Do you agree with the independent litman commission's recommendation for significantly reduced staffing ratio to .73 staff per one incarcerated person? That's just a yes or no. Given that the city is looking to reduce the Rikers population to 3,000 by 2027, how can DOC justify advocating for additional CO classes when the department is already so overstaffed? The Nunes monitor reports have found that overstaffing has resulted in excessively violent responses from staff when misconduct occurs. What steps has the DOC taken to address this dynamic? And lastly, it is clear to objective observers that the issue at play here is not understaffing, it's mismanagement. Can you describe how the department is shifting how CEOs are deployed to ensure essential posts are covered?
Thank you for your question. In response to the litman commission's ratio, I think what we have to take into consideration is not only the number of people that are in our custody when we talk about a ratio, I think we also have to think about the footprint of our facilities. I think we also have to think about the other responsibilities that go into managing facilities, whether it's external security patrols, transportation of individuals to court. All of that requires officers. So it's not as simple just 1.5 to 1 or .73 to 1 ratio that has to go into thinking about what is the proper table of organization, not only of a facility, but what it takes to actually manage a department in its current state. To your question of excessive staffing or overstaffing leading to high rates of force, I think there's been a lot of contributing factors to high rates of force from what I've seen. It's not just a staffing issue. And I get the modern understanding of making this argument that it is a connection to staffing, but I think that historically, there has been no accountability in this department for a long time, and I've been very public about that. We do not have a timely and meaningful discipline process. I'm trying to correct that. So there's a lot of systemic failures that have been going on for some time in the department, and they need systemic solutions. In regard to staff deployment, we have already been engaging with not only technological solutions, but thinking about, and I think it's similar and in line with my discussion with the monitor, as how do we effectively deploy staff so that we can meet the mission of our department?
Oh, I just wanted to add, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Councilmember. So as of the March 14 payroll, uniform staff and active payroll status, 7,361. We're authorized 7,460. So our vacancy rate is now under our authorized headcount. So we, I'm not sure, you mentioned 8,300 staff?
Yeah, so you did have this number.
I did have active payroll, yes. 7,361 for the rank of correction officer, 6,596.
And I mentioned it in my testimony as well, our staffing numbers or uniform count. And it has decreased 20% since 2019.
Time expired.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Narcisse.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, and thank you for being here. But 90 days usually a grace period, so that's your 90 days, three months or about. So we can understand that you cannot fix everything overnight, but at least we expected the data have been transferred somehow, some way for you to be able to answer some basic questions. But unfortunately, you were not prepared for that, and so is your team. But hoping, moving forward, that we'll do better. I mean, I like to be optimistic because as a nurse, I have some patients, but this one is out of control. So I don't have much question to ask because there's so many questions that's already asked, and there's no answer, but I will push for this one because it's very important to me as a nurse for three decades. Earlier, you mentioned that the average wait time for medical care is eight minutes in the clinic. Can you please clarify, is that the wait time once someone reaches the clinic? What is the average time from one, when a person is in custody requests medical care, until the receive medical care? And how long on average does someone wait for an escort? Thank you.
So the wait time is actually, Councilmember, when the person gets to the clinic, I don't have off the top of my head transport, escort times to give you. I'd have to follow up with you to see if we can evaluate what that turnaround time looks like. And I think we have to evaluate it by a routine sick call versus an appointment for like a specialized treatment.
Commissioner, are you looking for more data, something to share?
No, no, I answered.
Okay. So I appreciate it, but I don't know how factual because I cannot check. So if you have the data, so all the question that we asked, I'm sure you're going to move forward with all of them and send the answers to us. So I would like to have all those answers for us to see as a body, how can we best treat people equally and fairly? We're talking about equity. We want equity in health in there. We want equity in all aspect, and it makes sure that folks have opportunity while they in there. And that's what the city is about. That's what we're looking for.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe, Councilmember Wrestler, you had your hand up earlier. Did you have questions?
Time starts now.
Firstly, let me thank our Chair, Carolina Rivera. I am really, really pleased that you're in this role. We need you here. And I want to say, Commissioner Malina, you ran, by taking this job, you ran into the fire and took on an incredibly difficult position at one of the most dysfunctional places on earth. And I appreciate your willingness to roll up your sleeves and try. And in all of our years of working together, you really, there's no problem too big or too small for you. You do everything you can to try and fix it, and I appreciate that. And I applaud the values that you bring to the work. That being said, this isn't a question of individual leadership. This is systemic failure. And the humanitarian crisis that we are experiencing on Rikers Island should be at the forefront of every New Yorker's mind. And unfortunately, I think much of the crisis is man-made. I'd even say union-made. It is a direct failure of our corrections officers to show up to work. And it is totally unacceptable that we have, I think the last I saw was 1,400 corrections officers failing to show up and do their jobs. And it's causing tremendous problems for the detainees on Rikers, including my own constituents, who are not being delivered to medical appointments, to court dates, to recreation. It's not okay. And I am most focused on how we get these individuals to show back up to work and do their jobs. So let me just ask that question plainly. Commissioner Malina, how do we force the corrections officers who are failing to show up to work to come in each and every day?
So I think it's, I'll just add, and we've known each other for a long time, and you know that I'm a straight shooter. I think it's, it's a very balanced approach in that, listen, I've engaged significant amounts of this workforce to get at least the number of workers that have returned back to work. And I think engaging with the workforce, and especially historically when organizational health was not a priority for this department for a long time, that has played a part in what is causing people to be out of work. We have to recognize that with the high rates of force that this department has been experiencing over many, many years, that many of those workers that are out are out because they've been suffering from minor duty injuries in those engagements. So we have to take that into consideration.
Yes. They are putting their colleagues at risk by failing to show up to work. And too many people are not doing their jobs and then failing to go to the posts where they're needed most. Just last week, we lost a detainee, Mr. Dehaz, who choked because there was no correction officer around, right? And I just am incredibly, I'm outraged. I am just incredibly disappointed that the failure of officers to come in and do their jobs puts their colleagues at risk and puts our detainees at risk. And they are failing, and the ones who do show up are failing to serve in the posts where they are needed most. And I really think that the time has come for us to think about an aggressive, comprehensive civilianization approach to DOC, where we limit the number of roles and positions that are filled by corrections officers and start ensuring that the posts where corrections officers are needed are filled, and the remainder of positions are filled by civilians. Because these folks, in my opinion, have demonstrated that they don't, too many of the officers have demonstrated that they don't care about their colleagues and they don't care about our detainees and are putting us collectively at risk as a result.
And we are, I wanted to say that we are evaluating the civilianizing post that should be done by civilians in the first place. And I agree that we do have officers that are working in the job that we're not hired to do. So we are evaluating that as part of our process so that we can get uniforms back, uniform officers working in facilities.
And I just, I have to-
Process as well.
I do have to say, though, that like, based on all of the data that I've seen and the folks that I've spoken to who are advocates and have previously been in DOC, most of the people who are out should be in. And most of the people are claiming they are out for sick leave or should be in. And we are experiencing a strike via sick out that is totally reprehensible. And so we need to start, I was disappointed that you discontinued the contract with Mount Sinai. We need to replace it with something that's going to actually work. If that wasn't working well enough, we need to replace it with something stronger. I am sick of carrots. We need real enforcement and ability. And I just want to say in closing, I do not support additional corrections officers. I support demanding that people who are on this job, who are hired to do these jobs, show up to work. And I will fight back strongly in this budget if there is one, if there are any additional officers. We should be reducing the force at DOC where we have the highest ratio of officers to detainees in the country, not the other way around. And that is a very important issue for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We will return back to Chair Rivera now for any additional questions.
My colleague, for being honest about the robust conversation we've had about staffing and reform and the Nunes federal monitor, how they have laid out several operational and staffing recommendations for the department. Are those recommendations part of your conversations with OMB? Are you planning to implement them?
So what I would say is those conversations are not only part of our OMB. The law department is part of those conversations. Our agency attorneys are part of those conversations. They're part of conversations that we're having with the monitor.
So are you planning on implementing any of those recommendations? I mean, it's not the first report. There've been 12 reports.
Chair Rivera, if I may, we are currently reviewing those recommendations. There is aspects of those recommendations that we are very much in line with. You heard the Commissioner speak earlier about efforts to realign housing with respect to gain. That is something, as you know, the monitor also recommended. The monitor made recommendations regarding the security operations manager. That's something we've been actively talking with the monitor about. There are recommendations that go to discipline under the Third Remedial Order. We are obligated already to comply with that Third Remedial Order. So there are aspects of those recommendations that we are working on and are committed to working on. As to the specifics, though, there's right now a process. They made these recommendations. The monitor is asked to meet with us. The monitor will then be meeting with all parties, and then we'll be going for the court. So we need to go through that process before we can say here today as to whether specific recommendations will be adopted or not. There are conversations we need to first have with our council and law department and then directly with the monitor before we can make those firm commitments. I hope that's helpful.
Well, as we saw with the monitor's initial recommendations in 2016 and the resulting increase in headcount of the Blasio administration, adding staff has proven not to address the underlying issues in the department or improve conditions at Rikers. So assuming that no other officers are hired, I mean, I think it's safe, I think you should plan for that, all things considered. How will the department carry out these steps using the existing resources?
Well, I have to follow up with you on that question because I think it's really clear that if we're moving away from our restrictive housing model, we're going to need additional resources in order to have those individuals that have committed violent acts and have shown a willingness to commit violent acts against other persons that are in custody and staff, that would be, we would need staff to do that.
So you provided the number of-
Again, that's not only our own opinion, it's also the opinion of the classification and custody management expert that we hired at the recommendation of the monitor.
You provided the number of staff. Is that OBCC, EMTC, and RMSC? So are these the number of posts or the number of staff assigned?
Staff assigned.
I would say, you know, I'm just thinking about some of your responses here. It's unclear. Do you know how many of these posts are staffed each day and how often they are fully staffed?
Yeah, I have to follow up with you on the number per day, if you want to, per facility. We could provide that for you.
Okay. Can you provide these numbers then for all of the facilities on Rikers as well as the boat and BBCC?
Yes.
You responded to one of my colleagues in saying that you're anticipating an average cost per person incarcerated at around $243,000 in fiscal year 2023. This is much lower than current projections, which put the cost recently at over $500,000. How are you accounting for this number as there is no decrease in the overall budget? Are you anticipating an increase in the number of people incarcerated?
No, the number that I gave, and I think DC Lions can speak to more eloquently than I can, is that there are other monies that are taken into consideration that put that number at 500,000, DC Lions.
Thank you. So the number that was provided by the Controller's Office, the 556,000, that includes pension and fringe costs, which we don't account for because they don't come out of our budget. So what we're speaking to is strictly whether we're talking about fiscal year 21. We'd look at our actual expenditures for the fiscal year over the average daily population for the fiscal year. Or speaking, you know, for the current year, fiscal year 22, we're just looking at the preliminary budget over the average daily population through February, which is higher. So the current average daily population is around 5,500. Towards the end of fiscal year 21, it was about 4,900. Towards the end of fiscal year 21, it was about forty-nine hundred. So our costs are strictly our expenditures over the average daily population. That's why you'll see that difference.
So what is the department's relationship with alternatives to incarceration and division and diversion services? Are you taking steps to reduce the number of people incarcerated?
So I've had a lot of conversation, not only with advocates and MoJ, and so that we're part of the thought process to how, to identify how we can increase alternatives to incarceration. I've sat in on a panel even in supportive increasing supportive housing for justice involved so that not only supportive housing can be used as a prevention, but also used as an alternative to incarceration method. So we're part of those conversations. But the people that are placed here in our custody are there placed here by the courts.
Well, I appreciate you coming in and answering our questions. Typically at the end of, and I think you've experienced this when we sat one-on-one, my team and yours, is I go over the steps that each person, each side has to provide for accountability purposes. And the list is really very, very long, Commissioner, of the things and the data, the numbers and some of the information that quite frankly you owe us. So I, I think you've heard from the committee that the crisis at Rikers is felt deeply throughout the city and needs to be addressed urgently. So I appreciate your dedication to reform. I hope to see improvements quickly as change cannot wait. I will say that our charter mandated responsibility of oversight and investigation is absolutely related to having data and being able to evaluate the budget and the needs of the department. I do not think this is a unique budget issue. I do think you have a ton of resources. I understand that we might disagree on that issue. But I do know that that information and that data is absolutely critical to having a productive relationship. So I'm looking forward to receiving the information requested today and working together. And I thank you and your team for the time that you've provided myself and the committee members. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
And with that, I will turn it over to Committee Counsel.
Thank you. We will now turn to public testimony. Please listen for your name as I will be calling individuals one by one and will also announce the person who is next. Once your name is called, please accept the prompt to unmute yourself and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and announce that you may begin. Your testimony will be limited to two minutes. If there's anyone who would like to submit written testimony for the record, they may do so by emailing their testimony up to seventy-two hours after the hearing to testimony@council.nyc.gov. I would like to now welcome Controller Brad Lander to testify, followed by Senator Jessica Ramos, followed by Elizabeth Daniel Vasquez.
Time starts now.
Sorry, I apologize. Can I, can you hear me? Wonderful. All right. Hang on just one second. I apologize. I got to get my testimony up. All right. Good afternoon. Thank you so much, Chair Rivera, members of the Committee on Criminal Justice, members of the council and staff for the opportunity to testify today. I'm here today as the city's chief financial and accountability officer to make clear that the ongoing crisis in our jail system continues in spite of outsized resources and will not be solved by increasing funds, as many of you have rightly said. Spending per person has continued to grow and now totals more than half a million dollars per person in custody per year when pension and OTPS costs are included. Yet violence continues to climb in just the last few days. George Pagan and Herman Diaz became the second and third individuals to die in custody this year after sixteen individuals last year. The problem is not a lack of resources, it's how those resources are being managed. The Department of Corrections has been on the controller's watch list for years. And this morning, we released our most recent update, which we've provided to you and has a lot more details I'm happy to go into in response to questions. For the first time in four years, the DOC budget is forecast to increase in FY 2022. One main driver is overtime spending, which was up seventy-one percent for the first seven months of the year. And my office projects it'll be up by over one hundred million dollars this year and next. So much of that is overtime that DOC staff are forced to work double and triple shifts because their colleagues are unavailable to work. One stat here, before, prior to FY 2020, the annual paid absence rate for uniformed staff at DOC averaged between five and seven percent. Now, while absences have grown at all uniformed agencies since the start of the pandemic, DOC's has skyrocketed to twenty-seven percent, far surpassing the ten percent at FDNY and sanitation. Rates of violence have increased as shown in charts nine, ten, eleven, and twelve of our report. The number of slashings and stabbings more than tripled in the current fiscal year and use of force reached record highs at the end of FY 21. Provision of services to people in custody has deteriorated from June 2020 through July 2021. The number of incarcerated individuals who missed medical appointments rose from around two thousand to over fifteen thousand. Data released by the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice show a dramatic increase in, decrease, excuse me, in court productions, leaving individuals to languish on Rikers for longer periods of time before their cases are resolved. Given this harrowing reality, as so many of you said in your Q and A, reform is urgent. Simply adding new uniformed officers to the roles while a quarter of correction officers don't report to work will not reduce violence, save lives, or restore safe functioning to the system. DOC leadership must adopt new staffing policies that address the absentee crisis. To start, the department should immediately comply with the federal monitoring team's latest recommendations, including and especially the appointment of an external staffing manager with the authority to address and change the dysfunctional staffing practices. Like Chair Rivera, we have requested and been promised information on staffing and violence from the department. I appreciate the department's assistance with this request and look forward to reviewing the information DOC has committed to provide. And of course, we'll share it with the council as well when we get it. Want to talk for a minute about bail reform. Given the recent debate in Albany about rolling back bail reform yesterday, my office released a report charting trends in bail made and set by the city of 2019 in order to invest wisely in strategies that will keep our community safe. It is critical to follow facts rather than fear. The evidence shows that the share of people who are rearrested while awaiting trial has not changed following the 2019 bail reform laws. Each month, more than ninety-nine percent of people awaiting trial are not rearrested for a violent felony. This was true before bail reform and has remained true after. I'm happy to go into more detail and questions about other things we found in that report, which include that bail continues to drive pretrial incarceration and siphon money from low-income families and communities. Finally, I want to turn to one critical long-term question. Are we still on the path to close Rikers or not? In 2019, after years of advocacy and debate, this council took action to put New York City on a path to close Rikers Island, replacing the deteriorating facilities there with four new jails with a combined capacity of thirty-three hundred people by the end of 2027. As a member of the body, I voted for that plan and I continue to believe it's the best path towards smaller, safer, and more just system. But it is not currently clear whether the city is on path to achieve that goal. Got a chart on page six of our watch list report that you can look at that shows from 2007 to 2020, average daily jail population declined steadily and was headed toward, sorry, I'll finish up in just a second, was headed toward the thirty-three hundred line. But in the, you know, we got down below four thousand people at the start of the pandemic after bail reform and through an aggressive effort at the beginning of the pandemic. But since then, following rollbacks in bail reform and rising crime rates, the average daily population has risen to around fifty-seven hundred. And I think we just need to look with a real set of open eyes because without a strong, clear recommitment to the full plan to close Rikers and option to implement it now, I fear we will reach 2027 with crumbling facilities on Rikers still open and many more people incarcerated than new facilities can hold. Advancing that vision of smaller, safer, fairer jail system is one of the city's most pressing challenges. And it will require many steps from all of us, community investments that reduce crime, harm reduction policies like Treatment Not Jails, ending the torture that is solitary confinement, better compliance with our bail laws, and far more rapid case processing to reduce the jail population, close Rikers Island, and curb the violence in our jails. Thank you for this opportunity and for your leadership, Chair and council members, to address this humanitarian crisis.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Senator Jessica Ramos, followed by Elizabeth Daniel Vasquez, followed by Mary Lynn Worldus.
Time starts now.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Jessica Ramos. I represent Senate District thirteen, which consists of Corona, East Elmhurst, Jackson Heights, and parts of Astoria, Elmhurst, and Woodside. When redistricting goes into effect in November, I will represent Rikers Island in the state senate. I'm testifying before my colleagues in the city council today to share opportunities for collaboration and to raise solutions and alternatives to the inhumane conditions proliferating on Rikers Island. As an elected official, I have the right and responsibility to participate in unannounced inspections of DOC facilities where I take the opportunity to assess how taxpayer dollars are being spent and speak with correction officers and those being held pretrial. The federal monitor's most recent report on Rikers emphasizes what we already knew. The conditions of these pretrial detentions are a violation of due process. I'd like to highlight two bills I sponsor in the state senate to lower the population and facilitate a responsible closure of the facility. Currently, the city and state require courts to operate drug diversion programs. These courts offer a critical alternative to incarceration for those struggling with substance abuse disorders. However, these courts do not provide treatment for those with mental health challenges and eligibility for such programming is contingent on being accused of one of only a limited and arbitrary list of underlying charges. Moreover, many who would otherwise participate in these programs do not because they must plead guilty as a condition of their enrollment in diversion courts, a coercive practice that sets people up for failure. Based on the success of Brooklyn's mental health diversion courts, I've introduced S-2881B, the Treatment Not Jails Act. This piece of legislation will massively expand eligibility by discarding existing charge-based eligibility restrictions and extending treatment court opportunities to those charged with misdemeanor and violent offenses. There are thousands of individuals who are arrested for low-level misdemeanors and they should have access to treatment if they so desire. To implement diversion programs, we need our city to invest in more mental health beds and more treatment facilities. We are all concerned with public safety. Let's take the responsibility of addressing those fears seriously by spending taxpayer dollars on programs that meaningfully intervene in the post-pandemic mental health crisis. I also carry S-6688A, which would end the city's barbaric practice of having correction officers work twenty-four-hour shifts. We are not calling on ending this practice by hiring more correction officers, but rather by locking up fewer people. This bill currently has a whole new message, so I ask members of the city council to support ending this for the care of incarcerated people and the well-being of officers alike. The state budget is due in two weeks and I'm proud of the efforts we have made in the Senate One House to invest in poverty reduction measures that create true public safety. I hope my colleagues will take that energy into their own budget proposal and divest from Rikers to invest in New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Elizabeth Daniel Vasquez, followed by Mary Lynn Worldus, followed by Kate Rubin.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Daniel Vasquez and I'm the Director of the Science and Surveillance Project at Brooklyn Defender Services. I want to thank the city council and Chair Rivera for holding this hearing. As has been so acutely acknowledged today throughout, we're presently faced with a broad-scale humanitarian crisis within our city's jails. Appropriately, this hearing has focused much of its energy on questions of staffing and the health and safety of those who are being held in our city's jails. Our written testimony deals with many of these issues as well. But with my brief time today, I'd like to focus on a specific element of DOC's budget spending that impacts both the dignity and fundamental humanity of our community members who are detained as well as the communities they have been separated from. Despite DOC's expanded budget requests, the department is presently spending more than two million dollars on surveillance products in the name of phone services. This spending persists despite a drumbeat of shortfalls in basic decency and human rights. In 2018, our council led the country in making phone calls from city jails free of charge. But by 2021, however, it had become very clear that even though calls no longer cost our clients and their families money, these calls carry a far more significant cost. The first indication of this came when it was revealed that DOC and its phone service and surveillance vendor, Securus, had illegally recorded more than fifteen hundred privileged phone calls between people incarcerated and their attorneys. This illegal activity was not new for Securus. Since 2018, they've been sued nationwide for this practice. But illegal call recording turns out to be the tip of the iceberg when it comes to Securus' troubling surveillance scheme. The company has built a vast and interconnected web of surveillance that is perpetually blanketing not only those presently detained in our city's jails, but also their families, communities, and advocates. For example, Securus houses a database of the audio recordings of every call made from our city's jails, the transcribed text of those calls, the personal information of everyone who has been processed into those jails, the financial information of every community member who has put money on a commissary account, and the voice prints of everyone who has placed or received a call from those jails. Presently, Securus' surveillance web, however, is constructed without any court oversight and no need for a warrant. Under Securus' system, the mere reality of being poor and unable to afford bail means a detained New Yorker today, along with his or her entire communities, has fewer rights, less privacy, and diminished dignity. It bears repeating in case the implications of this web are lost, that more than eighty percent of those detained are being held pretrial, convicted of nothing, and predominantly held due to an inability to afford bail. Those held pretrial are also more than ninety percent black and brown. This web of surveillance is impacting our black and brown communities at a staggering rate. And the time for the city council to act to dismantle this web is now. The budget oversight provided by the council is a critical first place to intervene. DOC first entered its contract with Securus in 2014. The original contract term with Securus expired. The department has one-year sole options to renew and DOC's next renewal option for its Securus contract comes due this month. The council should urge the department to refuse to exercise its next option. Ending the agreement with Securus is the only way for New York to get its community's data back. Until the date of agreement termination, Securus retains New Yorkers' data within their systems. In addition to terminating the agreement, the council should urge the department to issue a new RFP for phone services. This RFP should be limited to phone service only from a non-surveillance company and should not include any surveillance products. The time for New York City to get out of business with predatory surveillance phone companies like Securus Technologies is now. Our community's data should be returned. This two million-plus-per-year project of surveillance should be dismantled. Neither our constitutional rights to silence and to counsel, nor our dignity, privacy, and intimacy should be for sale in our city. New Yorkers deserve more. Thank you.
Sorry, I think I was on mute. Next, we'll hear from Mary Lynn Worldus, followed by Kate Rubin, followed by Benny Bosho Jr.
Good afternoon and thank you, council and especially new council members, Chair Rivera. I'm the Director of the Prisoners' Rights Project at the Legal Aid Society. At the outset, as counsel in the Nunez matter, want to reassure you, Chair Rivera, that nothing in that matter prevents the department from committing today to implement the Nunez Monitor's recommendations. That was just a dodge. Put bluntly, this budget funds the biggest grift in city government today. As Councilmember Hanif noted, DOC remains the most overstaffed jail in the United States. But as many of you have noted, the problem is the staff don't come to work. This is having catastrophic consequences for health and safety in the jails, leading to the crisis that we're experiencing today. And the city has shown itself incapable of or unwilling to address this problem. Or more critically, unable to deploy or even supervise the staff who do show up sufficient to run the jails. The council simply cannot rubber stamp this budget under these conditions. I want to draw your attention, though, to one particularly egregious item that has not been addressed today, buried in the budget. And that is the request for eleven million dollars to fund the emergency services unit and K-9 units on Rikers and eleven million more in the capital budget to build a new and 11 million more in the capital budget to build a new ESU compound on Rikers. It is essential that this council deny both requests. The ESU, if you're not familiar with it, operates as a rogue unit outside the chain of command and is singularly responsible for some of the worst brutality in the jails. The department simply refuses to rein them in. So building them a new building on Rikers, let alone allowing, funding them to continue their terror and using the adjacent K-9 units that are instruments of racial terror in the jails is simply deplorable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we will hear from Kate Rubin, followed by Benny Boshio Jr., followed by Dalvany K. Powell.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair. My name is Kate Rubin, Director of Policy at Youth Represent. We provide legal services to young people 26 and under. We also do policy advocacy and youth leadership development. Thank you, Chair Rivera, committee members, staff for the chance to testify. As you know, as committee members, the city is at a crossroads. We're not yet out of the pandemic. Gun violence has surged over the past two years, and the humanitarian crisis at Rikers is just getting worse. Opponents of Raise the Age and bail reform have tried to blame the surge in gun violence on those reforms, but the data and common sense tell a different story, and I'll focus my testimony on Raise the Age and youth justice. For the first 18 months after Raise the Age went into effect, shootings in New York City remain the lowest they've been in decades. Only months into the pandemic did gun violence increase in the city. For young people, the effects of COVID-19 are far-reaching. 18- to 24-year-olds have higher rates of depression and anxiety than any other age group. The pandemic has widened educational disparities at every level. Children have lost caregivers. The combined toll has created deep uncertainty for young people, leading some to question whether they can rely on the very institutions that are responsible for their health and safety. Now, young people are looking to elected officials to lead us out of the pandemic and into a just recovery. They are looking for lasting, community-based solutions to gun violence, not for policies that blame or criminalize youth. We worked to pass Raise the Age in 2017, and while the law was an important step forward, it did not extend any protections to young adults past the age of 18. This week, there are over 1,200 young people, age 18 to 25, incarcerated in New York City jails. As you know, the annual, much talked about, the annual cost is, we calculate it, over a half a million dollars per year, many times the cost of even the most expensive college, and we can't even provide basic safety. There are so many better ways to spend this money. The system must divest, the city must divest from systems that surveil, police, and incarcerate young people, and invest in housing, education, green space, healthcare, living wage employment opportunities, and legal services. We detail these investments in the Raise the Age Campaign's 2022 Youth Justice Platform for New York, which is linked to in my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we will hear from Benny Boshio Jr., followed by Dalvany K. Powell, followed by Kelly Grace Price.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rivera and the members of your committee. My name is Benny Boshio Jr. I am the President of the Correction Officers Benevolent Association, the second-largest law enforcement union in the city of New York. Our members, as you know, provide care, custody, and control for approximately 5,700 inmates daily. Today's hearing focuses on the mayor's preliminary budget for fiscal year 2023 as it relates to the New York City Department of Corrections. A few weeks ago, WNBC News featured an interview with three correction officers who work at three different facilities on Rikers Island. Each of the officers said they're at a breaking point. They described daily violence at their facilities, with one officer even admitting she fears for her life every day. Another officer, who was involved in three different inmate-on-inmate fights, including a stabbing incident, said that each time she called for backup, no backup arrived. These stories are just a small example of what our officers are forced to deal with every day while getting assaulted, including sexually assaulted. No matter what your political ideology may be, we can all agree that the failures of former Mayor de Blasio's gross mismanagement of the jails over the past eight years have created one of the worst humanitarian crises our city's jails have ever faced. At the core of this crisis lies a severe staffing shortage, which was created by the city's failure to hire additional officers for three years, even as the inmate population rose significantly and jail violence skyrocketed year after year. For far too long, the media and certain special interest groups have grossly mischaracterized our staffing situation, with some even claiming that the New York City Department of Corrections has one of the richest staffing levels of correction officers in the nation. I want to use my testimony today as an opportunity to dispel this myth and to outline the realities concerning both our staffing levels and our staffing needs. We have approximately 7,000 correction officers who work across three different tours of duty. They are not all deployed at the same time. In any given housing area, there are 50 inmates to one correction officer. Not hiring correction officers for three years has decimated us. Between January 1 of 2019 to February 28 of 2022, there have been 1,745 resignations and 1,019 retirements. That is a total of 2,764 officer positions that have been permanently lost. In that same period of time, only approximately 75 officers graduated from the Correction Academy, which just took place January 31 of this year. Historically, the New York City Department of Correction has not kept up with proper staffing levels of correction officers. There are many elements that have to be considered when staffing each jail facility to maintain safety and security. Each command has a Table of Organization, a TO, which is the formula that shows how many officers are needed to run the budgeted post in that command on a 24/7 basis. For years, there have been hundreds of unbudgeted posts that require additional officers to be deployed at those posts. Unbudgeted posts, also referred to as facility-added posts, require officers to work at those posts, but they have not been authorized for funding by the Office of Management and Budget, OMB. Since OMB has not funded them, they are not added to the TO. However, the agency is authorized to run the additional posts on overtime. For example, some inmate programs have been added in recent years requiring additional officers to supervise those programs. In addition, special housing units, such as the Enhanced Supervision Housing Unit, ESH, requires about seven offices to supervise each of those housing areas. Yet on paper, one will only see two correction officers deployed there. This has been a critical problem for COBA because it doesn't show the correct number of officers that are actually needed to supervise each command safely and securely. I call this the Department of Corrections' dirty little secret that has been happening for many years. This also, this is also one of many factors that have contributed to significant rises in overtime. It is imperative that the city hire the proper number of officers that is required to supervise every post that is required, the presence of an officer. Every post must be manned and accounted for on paper. Currently, there are two jails on Rikers Island that are fully operational but are technically not showing as officially being opened on paper. Those facilities are the Eric M. Taylor Center and the Otis Bantam Correctional Center. There also has to be additional officers to backfill posts to maintain safety and security and to ensure the inmates receive their mandated services. Over 1,500 officers have been assaulted in the last year. Many of those officers have been fully recovered from their injuries. Some of them have come back to work on a medically monitored MMR status, also known as light duty. When officers are MMR status, they cannot have any inmate contact, which prevents them from working in a housing area and supervising inmates on the floor. Correction officers must be on full-duty status in order to work in housing areas with violent assaultive inmates. If they are not 100% physically, how can they protect themselves or the other inmates in their supervision? We also have officers dealing with the long-term effects of COVID and some who are dealing with terminal illnesses. Over approximately 3,000 officers contracted COVID since the beginning of the pandemic. Because the city did not hire additional officers in three years, hundreds of officers were forced to work double trips, double shifts, triple shifts, and sometimes quadruple shifts with no meal breaks or rest. Some officers were even forced to sleep in their cars in the parking lot of Rikers because they were too exhausted to drive home. How can anyone think that the sick rate wouldn't rise significantly when our officers are putting in such a significant amount of overtime on a weekly basis? When budgeting for staffing levels, there are many factors that must be considered. These factors include the risk management accountability system. That will require an additional 700 officers to supervise inmates during out-of-cell time, including five hours of daily activity with counselors, social workers, intervention specialists, and community providers. There are vacation picks that are two, there are two vacation picks a year that total 27 days a year. One pick is three weeks, the other pick is two weeks. Yearly academy block training and firearms requalification. Every officer must go to the Correction Academy for four days of training and one day at the Firearms and Tactical Unit. We have officers on military leave. Armed Forces Reserve that get deployed and go for training in the military. FMLA, we have officers who are on leave caring for an ill family member. Maternity leave, about 44% of correction officers are women, and they are entitled to take maternity leave. Suicide Watch, every inmate that is deemed suicidal requires one-on-one supervision by an officer. So technically, if there are four suicidal inmates in a housing area, it would require four additional officers to supervise that housing area. Hospital runs, when an inmate requires medical attention at a hospital, two officers are required to take that inmate to the hospital. These situations arise frequently in every facility, yet are not accounted for when it comes to staffing. Personal emergencies, we have many single parents on the job. If officers have to take their children to the hospital, that prevents them from going to work. The bottom line is that safe staffing, safe staffing levels matter. Whenever, whether it is properly supervising areas, providing backup when violent incidents occur, preventing suicides, transporting inmates to and from the hospital and from their court appearances, supervising inmate visits and inmate programs, all roads lead to a safe and secure jail system, lead to maintaining proper staffing levels. We need 2,500 more officers to backfill the vacancies created over the past several years and the vacancies that will continue to emerge the months and years ahead. The previous administration's experiment to divest from our workforce while forcing our officers to do more with less has failed miserably. Those failures have needlessly hurt the lives of countless correction officers and the inmates in our custody. It's time to turn the page. With that said, I am happy to answer any of your questions, and I appreciate you allowing me the extra time to speak.
Thank you. Next we will hear from Dalvany K. Powell, followed by Kelly Grace Price, followed by Michelle Feldman.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, Chair Carolina Rivera and members of the committee. I am the President of the United Probation Officer Association. I want to thank the committee for affording me, on behalf of the members of United Probation Officers Association, also known as UPLA, the opportunity to present important issues on the future of criminal justice in the city of New York for your consideration when preparing your recommendations for the next fiscal year's budget. Currently, there are approximately 748 probation officers and their supervisors. A very large number of my members are women and people of color. Prior to the Bloomberg administration, there were approximately 1,550 probation officers. And over the last, last two years, especially the last three years, the Department of Probation's staffing has been reduced almost in half, and our workload has increased in part because of bail reform and the Raise the Age program that increases the number of our clients. We have also been required to administer the electronic mindstream program for certain clients we now have to supervise. To perform our duties and responsibilities, we need your help. The Department of Probation has issues with retention and recruitment. Our members are leaving to get hired into higher-paying criminal justice-paying positions. While we recently had a civil service exam for probation officers in April 2019 and supervised probation officers in May 2021, there has not been a civil service examination for administrative probation officers since 2017. This does not, this does not speak well for advancement in the career path. Our salaries are the lowest in the metropolitan area for probation officers, which includes Nassau, Suffolk Counties, and Westchester Counties. We do the same work as probation officers in all nearby jurisdictions. We have been asked to do more with less. To do more, to do more, we need to find ways to be more efficient and productive, and we need more training and better equipment. Our members have bachelor's degrees and master's degrees in education and/or education and social work to help our clients begin to live productive and lawful lives. Our members are peace officers. My members are part of task force with other agencies, such as the US Marshes Drug Enforcement Agency, the MIPTD, and other law enforcement agencies. We carry firearms, we make arrests, and execute search warrants and arrest warrants. We need to be designated as police officers, especially since we do the same work as police and face the same dangers. We have begun to work with the Adams Administration in some of these areas. In fact, our commissioner, Anna Bemudas, just this last, just past Friday on March 18, 2022, announced at the graduation of new probation officers that she is working with the UPLA to help in the ongoing fight for pay parity. This public statement coincides with other public statements she has made, acknowledging the unfairness and disparity of our members. To that end, as part of, as part as the report in August of 2021 by this body, last year established probation officers are significantly underpaid, undervalued, and the need for pay equity in our department cannot be overstressed. This budget needs to include the resources to make this happen. Pay equity must be a priority for this department as it impacts every part of our operation of probation, and the budget has to reflect this priority. Because of the shortness of time allotted for the Department of Probation, I request that we meet with representatives of this committee to present a more in-depth picture and plans on how to enhance and adjust the work of probation officers and our supervisors, and of course, in funding for the needed changes. Thank you. I stand ready to answer any questions you may have now. Otherwise, I look forward to meeting with the representatives. Thank you and take care.
Thank you. I just want to remind all members of the public here to testify to please try to keep it to two minutes so we can keep moving forward. Next, we will hear from Kelly Grace Price, followed by Michelle Feldman, followed by Sarita Dafteri.
Time starts now.
Kelly, you're unmuted, but we do not hear you. Okay, we'll move on to Michelle Feldman and try to get back to Kelly Grace Price.
Time starts now.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Feldman, and I am with the Women's Community Justice Association, and we are running the Beyond Rosie's campaign for the women and gender expansive people at the Rose M. Singer Center on Rikers Island. The mothers and the daughters and the sisters there have been neglected and mistreated within the facility and by policymakers. Under the city's borough-based jail plan, the under 300 women and gender expansive people are among the last to leave Rikers five years from now, and they will be moving to a new Kew Gardens facility where they'll be sharing spaces and staff with men that opens in 2027. And that's worse than conditions at Rikers because at least Rosie's is a standalone facility, and the common entrance and other spaces that they would share with men at the Kew Gardens facility risks exposing women to their abusers and being re-traumatized. Also, it'll be just as far, if not further, for most families to visit there because Manhattan is the borough where most of the women are charged. So March is Women's History Month, and New York City can make history by creating a new plan for those at Rosie's. We're calling for a Women's Center for Justice, a more readily available, accessible, humane facility that is separate from men in Manhattan, either at Lincoln or Bayview, which are both closed state prisons. Rikers Commission Chair, former Chief Judge Jonathan Littman, and the Mayor's Social Justice Commission have called for the use of one of those facilities for that purpose. Renovating Lincoln or Bayview will be cheaper and faster than Kew Gardens, which is new construction. The recent renovations of Crossroads and Horizons Juvenile Facilities took 18 months as opposed to five years that Kew Gardens would take to complete, and it was 500 square foot cheaper than the new construction at Kew Gardens. So we envision a Women's Center for Justice that's a new model of gender responsive care with women actually getting with women actually getting treated for, for the root causes that leads to their incarceration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, next we'll try Kelly Grace Price again.
Time starts now.
You are unmuted, but we do not hear you. Okay, um, let's move on to Sarita Daftry and then followed by Anna Pastorella, followed by Victor Herrera.
Time starts now.
Thank you and good afternoon, Chair Rivera and council members. My name is Sarita Daftry. I'm a co-director of Freedom Agenda, one of the organizations leading the campaign to close Rikers and I'm glad to testify here today along with many of our members and partners. Uh, today you've heard answers about the operations of the city jail system that are, were either absent or unacceptable. The problems did not originate with this administration or department leadership, but they need to end here. We cannot lose more lives in DOC custody. We cannot see more lives forever damaged by the gross negligence of the New York City jail system and we cannot allow mass absenteeism and fraud to be rewarded with more staff and more funding. Not only would that be a distraction from the real solutions needed to improve conditions in the jails, including for people held there and people working there, but it would continue the pattern of starving our social service agencies of resources that are instead lavish on the country's most corrupt, most richly staffed, most richly funded jail system. It is past time to stop. Our members who have experienced records and whose loved ones are there now have watched in horror as we see one after another preventable death. Imagine how every person who loves someone currently trapped on that island must feel when learning that last week a man died choking on an orange in a unit where the one officer available failed to intervene. The level of disregard for human life is chilling. Then let's consider that Mr. Diaz was incarcerated at EMTC, which has seven hundred and fifteen uniformed staff assigned to it and only five hundred people in custody, according to the city's February twenty twenty, February twenty twenty-two departmental estimates. How many of those staff were home abusing sick leave or simply not at their post when Mr. Diaz was choking? Then let's further consider that Mr. Diaz suffered from addiction and mental illness. Hernan Diaz was likely one of the thousands of people in the city jail system who could be served by supportive housing, based on a recent analysis by the Corporation for Supportive Housing. This analysis shows that the city spends approximately one point four billion dollars annually to incarcerate over... Sorry, I'll just come, I'll just finish what I was saying, to incarcerate over twenty-five hundred people who could be served by supportive housing at a cost of a hundred and eight million. That means we would save one point two billion, save lives and make our city infinitely safer than jail ever could. The only question is why are we not doing that? So far, the city has been unwilling to change old patterns, hold DOC and its staff accountable and plan for new careers for people who are no longer needed as correction officers. We desperately need this council to move the city into a new era where we instead prioritize care, support and upstream solutions, including the, a priority of closing the pipeline that feeds Rikers that the mayor has named. Um, so to do that, we, we will send our written testimony that outlines a few key needs, but one is preventing any further hiring of officers, reducing overtime spending by consolidating operations and closing jails. Um, and as well, uh, this, the Board of Correction was not called to testify today, but making sure that they have adequate resources for the oversight that they need to do. Thank you and we will follow up with our written testimony.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Anna Pastorella, followed by Victor Herrera, followed by Darren Mack.
Time starts now.
Um, dear Chair Rivera and council members, thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Anna Pastorella. I'm the leader with Freedom Agenda and a longtime leader in the movement to close Rikers. In this budget, I see that several New York City agencies are going to suffer with less funding. Then I realized that we have been the introduction of vegan meals in school while money is being taken away from education too. Mayor Adams talks about prevention and intervention for youth so that they don't go into a pathway of crime. Unfortunately, I don't see these words reflected in the budget. What I see instead is that the Department of Correction budget is being increased by fifty-two millions from the last approved budget. This is a department that is not capable of or not willing to do the bare minimum of their responsibilities. They are not abused, not only abusing their sick leave by the thousands and they are wasting hundreds of millions in taxpayer dollars, but they are responsible for many wrongful deaths on Rikers Island. I have witnessed DOC atrocities against incarcerated people and visitors with my own personal experience when I was visiting my son, who was incarcerated for six years on Rikers while waiting for trial. Correction officers were not behaving, were behaving like criminals and they continue in the same criminal manner. The inadequate and disturbing conduct of this department should not be rewarded or funded. It needs to be addressed. This department is not worthy and despite their promises, it won't be fixed with more funding or more staff. The city of New York has already paid twelve point five millions to settle a case over illegal strip searches in New York City jails, plus many more millions to settle wrongful debts. DOC negligence is the sole cause for those suits. It's time to redistribute funds where they're really needed, such as education, mental health, housing, drug rehabilitation, composting, parks. The figures in this budget are invested in punishment of poor people who have no access to resources and punishment to taxpayers who have been wasting their money to pay correction officer salaries while they evade work and to pay for lost settlements. New Yorkers are counting on our allies in the council to divest from the Department of Corrections and invest in local communities, especially in the ones in the poorest parts of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we will hear from Victor Herrera, followed by Darren Mack, followed by Herbert Murray.
Time starts now.
Hi, uh, my name is Victor Herrera, proud member of Freedom Agenda, Fair Chance Housing, Treatment of Jails and Center for Community Alternatives. And I'm, I'm grateful to be here today to add my voice and my personal experience in the pre-detention and state incarceration system and why continued funding a widely failed system that impacts on the community in so many ways to be a human rights crisis must end. I was originally released on nine thirteen oh one. My original release date was nine eleven oh one. My incarceration was an intense experience that both learned traumatizing and why do I have to say only affected my mental health that required treatment for my lifelong life right now. I'm fifty-six years old this year. My life has fared better than many of my friends. Detention and imprisonment only adds more to our community concerns. Returning citizens are now affected by conviction, mental health, employment crisis and housing crisis, a clear pathway to an absence of resources and recidivism. Even worse, repeated deaths on Rikers Island. What should happen today? Redirecting funds to meet community needs. Sorry. To meet community needs like supportive housing, healthcare and programs at work and end funding nonprofit shelters. My recent experience today in a shelter, being assaulted by staff, okay? DHS efforts to cover it up, which I'm experiencing today, right now, and trying to transfer me, okay? This is no different than what's going on on Rikers Island. This needs to end as a human rights crisis. It needs to end now. Redirect the funding to our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Darren Mack, followed by Julian Harris Calvin, followed by Zachary Katz Nelson.
Time starts now.
Thank you, Chair Rivera and Criminal Justice Committee members. My name is Darren Mack. I'm a co-director of Freedom Agenda. I'm also a member of the Commission of Reinvestment and the Closure of Rikers Island, established by Local Law one ninety-three. This commission is charged with ensuring significant reinvestment recommendations are made in vulnerable communities disparately and historically impacted by mass incarceration. That commission has just released its first report. Research and data has shown a significant percentage of individuals impacted by the criminal legal system reside in historically under-resourced neighborhoods in New York City. As a co-chair of the Youth Subcommittee on the Commission, our mission is to identify investments that will prevent or remove young people from the criminal justice pipeline. But the question still remains, where will the city get the funding from? New York City Department of Correction has the highest DOC budget in the country. The proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three DOC budget is over two billion dollars. We spend the most money in DOC and get the worst results. To be clear, we want the programs and services that the people held in pre-dial detention rely on to continue to be funded to meet their basic needs. Therefore, we want to be strategic in right sizing DOC's bloated budget in key areas like re-instituting a hiring freeze of more staff to DOC, which already has the largest DOC staff in the country and that would save ninety-two million dollars this year or reducing overtime spending by consolidating operations and closing at least two jails in Rikers, which could generate up to a hundred and ten million in savings. I urge city council to deflate DOC's budget and we'll be able to reinvest those resources to fund the commission recommendations and all the organization providing programs and services and communities impacted by the criminal legal system. And lastly, I'll say this is what the Women Community Justice Association have proposed, then we could get the women off of Rikers Island within the next, with probably this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we will hear from Julian Harris Calvin, followed by Zachary Katz Nelson, followed by Jessica K.
Time starts now.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today. My name is Julian Harris Calvin and I am Director of the Vera Institute of Justice's Greater Justice New York Program. We have conducted a thorough analysis of the New York City correction spending and how it compares to the jail budgets of other jurisdictions. New York City, as Darren just mentioned, spends more than any other jurisdiction in the country. That's more than one billion dollars above what Los Angeles County, the nation's largest and second most expensive local jail system spends to detain over thirteen thousand people today. Budgets are moral documents and over the years, this city's correction spending has illustrated what we care about, who we care about and how we care for our communities in New York. Today, I urge you to reconsider this year's proposed correction spending as it simply serves to enable and reward years of mismanagement, ineptitude and negligence that continue to cost mostly black and brown lives. As you consider the budget, I ask you to reverse that year's long trend by one, as Sarita mentioned, not funding new correction officer hires, thereby forcing the department to get its staffing house in order. And in that same vein, secondly, to rein in overtime expenses currently projected to rise to over a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. It is time to face the necessary task of dealing with the city's DOC problem. A core aspect of that project is to refrain from continuing to fund the department's bloated and failing personnel roles, which can constitute eighty-eight percent of the fiscal year twenty-three budget at the expense of critical services that make our communities safer, healthier and more vibrant. For example, the mayor's proposed budget cuts the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene's budget by thirty-six percent, the Department of Youth and Community Developments by twenty-one percent and the Department of Homeless Services by twenty percent, yet keeps the DOC spending at levels of previous years.
Spared.
Thank you. Almost done. The issue underlying our failing correction system is not a lack of funding or a lack of staff, which outnumber people in detention by just under two thousand. As the monitor has repeatedly noted, a central issue is staffing mismanagement undergirded by chronic absenteeism, where we see thirty percent of officers out sick on any given day. Um, and overtime costs that reached a hundred and fifty-three million in fiscal year twenty-one. These overtime costs alone are the equivalent of over thirty-six hundred supportive housing beds. As the city plans to transition to a smaller, more humane borough-based jail system by twenty twenty-seven, we will need far fewer corrections officers. City leaders must start planning for and working towards that transition now and it begins with a budget that holds DOC accountable for maintaining appropriately staffed, well-managed and humane facilities. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm sorry for going over, but please don't hesitate to contact us and I hope you read our written testimony.
Thank you. Next we will hear from Zachary Katz Nelson, followed by Jessica K., followed by Kelly Grace Price.
Time starts now.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Zachary Katz Nelson. I'm the Executive Director of the Littman Commission. Thanks so much for the chance to testify. I want to talk about a couple of things. One is about trying to reduce the population at Rikers. Obviously, we're in a situation where DOC unfortunately cannot safely handle a number of people that are there. And one key factor is trying to stop people from going in. I always want to highlight supportive housing, which Sarita mentioned very briefly. About twenty-five hundred people cycling out of Rikers every single year who qualify for supportive housing. They're not getting it. Costs forty-two thousand dollars a year for supportive housing bed. It costs five hundred plus thousand dollars at Rikers and we know which is the better alternative. We really want the city pleased to try and double down on that. The second is that for people that are at Rikers, the city council should please help establish and fund population review teams. These are teams that have been used elsewhere in the country where senior officials from every justice agency get together and go case by case of everyone who's in jail and say, are there alternatives that would work to keep this person supported and the community safe? Whether it's supportive housing, whether it's mental health treatment, whether it's electronic monitoring. Let's figure out, does this person need to be in jail? One and two, can the case be resolved fairly, safely, quickly? Does this person's case need to linger? There are fifteen hundred people who've been at Rikers for over a year now, waiting for their trial. Of course, that alone has cost seven hundred fifty million dollars for the city. We could do much better. For people that are on Rikers right now, the NUNAS monitor made clear that there are not enough qualified effective leadership teams in the Department of Correction to demand nine jails. We need to consolidate operations. The department needs to consolidate operations, close the most decrepit and dangerous jails, have fewer facilities to operate. Violence will come down, service delivery will go up, people actually get to court on time. And then leadership training. We need to bolster the ranks of qualified leaders throughout the department from captains all the way up and it doesn't seem to be funding in the budget right now to ensure that that training will take place and take place swiftly. We really need that address. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Next we will hear from Jessica K., followed by Kelly Grace Price, followed by Nancy Cicardo.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, Chair Rivera and council members of the Committee on Criminal Justice. My name is Jessica K. I am the Deputy Director of Court Reform Programs at the Center for Court Innovation. The Center for Court Innovation advances fairness and effectiveness through operating programs, conducting research and providing expert assistance. I am here to highlight two funding requests for fiscal year twenty-three. All of my points today are attached in testimony with a corresponding application number. First, we are asking for council to continue its support of felony alternatives to incarceration in Brooklyn and take over the funding for continuing services in Manhattan through our Manhattan Justice Opportunities. Launched in two thousand nineteen with Manhattan District Attorney Asset Forfeiture Funds, those funds will expire in March of twenty twenty-three. This comes at a time when we are seeing an influx in felony diversion under a new district attorney and, as we've heard immensely earlier today, the documented humanitarian crisis at Rikers Islands. The Felony Alternative to Incarceration Program offers an evidence-based diversion approach for people facing felony charges. The harmful effects of incarceration have been long documented, particularly for those that have complex mental health needs. Eighty-one percent of program participants in Manhattan's felony program flagged for a mental health need. With council support, we can expand the felony alternative to incarceration programming to offer robust and individualized, community-based services to people facing lengthy incarceration. Without continuing funds in Brooklyn and supporting funding in Manhattan, this potentially will leave people in limbo. Second, we are also asking the council to continue to expand and support the center's innovative core funding, which allows us to flexibly respond to the immediate needs of all New Yorkers as they arise. Examples of programming this has funded in the past includes pre-arrangement diversion, driver accountability and cure violence models in New York City. This expanded funding would be used to further empower our direct services across our sites. Thank you for your time today and for your continued partnership.
Thank you. Next we will hear from Kelly Grace Price, followed by Nancy Cicardo, followed by Karen Oberlin Haji.
Time starts now.
Hi, good afternoon. It's Kelly Grace Price.
Hi, good afternoon. It's Kelly Grace Price. Thank you for allowing me to not appear, but to call in over my phone and to testify today. Chair Rivera, I have never heard stewardship of a criminal justice hearing in the New York City Council over the last nine years like I have had today. Thank you so much. I applaud you. Commissioner Molina, I trust you, and I hear your words in earnest, and I see the professionalism that is coming out of your department. And I'm, I really am, I'm rooting for you, but I get very, very worried when I hear you saying that all of your plans are stalled on implementing a tech solution. We have heard this same verbiage from every commissioner for the past seven years. Those tech solutions are all lying in a pile of garbage at the bottom of some server at the DOC. We still don't have accountability on the dozens of tech programs that were not implemented properly under the previous commissioners. And I really want to emphasize that I'm very, very wary of you hanging your entire hat on that tech solution. I want to spend the rest of my time addressing the BOC. Usually, the Board of Correction is here at these budget meetings. I was a little late today, only eight minutes, but I'm pretty sure I did not hear the BOC come forward and testify about their budget. I know the last time I looked at it, it was slashed considerably. And I would like to open a dialogue with this committee specifically about the BOC having parity in its budget to the DOC. Also, I think it's time that the council really consider changing the city charter to make BOC the people on the, the members of the BOC, not the staff, but to make those paid positions. We really need robust oversight, and you guys have seen me for the past, well, some of you for four years, some of you for longer than that, running around gathering data, trying to fight
Time expired.
as an advocate. We really need more professionalism in the BOC. I've spent a lot of time trying to explain the problems with the appointment process, but the BOC is a very special entity, and at the very least, its budget should not be cut, especially when the DOC budget is bloating. I'll, I'll turn in my written testimony, which of course will touch on other topics, and I look forward to working on these issues with you. Thank you so much, Kelly Grace Price. Close, Rosie.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Nancy Cicardo, followed by Karen Oberlin Haji, followed by Kristin Hogan.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Rivera and everybody else on the committee. My name is Nancy Cicardo, and I live in Harlem. I've been living in Harlem for thirteen years. I also, hey, I also experienced, I also experienced trauma in Rose M. Singer Rikers Island. That is why I'm here today to ask for a better plan for the Women's Center for Justice at Lincoln Correctional Facility in Harlem. I spent over a year and a half at Rose M. Singer, and it was humiliating for me. It was a very humiliating experience. I didn't have any shoes on my feet. I was forced to walk around in slippers. Not having those shoes was degrading and took my dignity from me. In top of that, I had officers mocking me and laughing at me instead of protecting me and being there for me. I also experienced a lot of sex, drugs, and rock and roll in Rikers Island. And the fact that I walked around with no shoes on my feet, I vowed to never ha, I vowed to never see another sister walk around barefooted. Right now, the city is planning to close Rose M. Singer for five ye, in five years and move the women and the gender expansive people to Kew Gardens in Queens. That would not be a good idea. That is not what women need. I know what women need because I am a woman, and I was in Rikers Island. I also experienced the women in Harlem. I see the women. One day, the next day, they're gone. They sent to Rikers Island, they arrested continuously, come home thirty, sixty, ninety days later with mental health issues, homelessness. And these issues are not being addressed. What are they doing in Rikers Island but besides abusing these women? I ask you, I ask you to please help us build this women's center in Harlem so we can address these issues for these women. I ask that the building be transformed into a women's center for justice that serve women in and outside of the building so they can stop the abuse and trauma. So many women and families have gone through so much in Harlem. Council members, I ask to help the city secure Lincoln from the state and create a place and hope for healing for women in Harlem. Also, women are the backbone to our society, and we continuously get knocked down. I, I heard Mr. Benny Bosa say earlier that you need twenty-five hundred officers. No, we need twenty-five ways to make it right for these women in Rikers Island. Twenty-five ways, and your time starts now. Thank you, Nancy Cicardo.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Karen Oberlin Haji, followed by Kristin Hogan, followed by Cassandra Warnie.
Time starts now.
Okay, looks like Karen's not available. We'll move on to Kristin Hogan.
Time starts now.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Kristin Hogan. I'm a program coordinator for parole mitigation in Osborne's Court Advocacy Services. Osborne offers a wide range of diversion and reentry programs throughout the state and city. We served more than twelve thousand New Yorkers last year. This June, we expect to open a one hundred and thirty-five-bed community reentry center in the former Fulton Correctional Facility, which we have developed over several years to address the pressing needs of people returning home without stable housing. My program is one of many Osborne programs supported by the council and for which we have asked for continuing funding for FY twenty-three. It was established to address the high numbers of technical parole violators on Rikers Island. We have been extremely successful in our goal of reducing these numbers and linking participants to community-based services. Our program has reduced the length of stay of our participants in more than ninety percent of cases. We had anticipated that with the passage of less is more, conditions would improve even further. However, while the number of people jailed for technical violations has been reduced, there are still a significant number detained on Rikers because of a pending criminal charge, often a minor charge, that creates a logjam leading to a long period of incarceration. In addition, in many cases, it seems DOC has been unable to transport people to the recognizance hearings in courts that are intended to be held within twenty-four hours. We also experience significant difficulty in supporting the prompt resolution of cases because of the challenges of scheduling timely video conferencing needed to move the cases forward. Even when we schedule a video conference, they are often canceled at the last minute. It is simply not safe to house the current number of detainees on Rikers with a workforce that seems unable to reliably move incarcerated people from place to place. We are especially concerned with our clients' inability to access timely medical and mental health care. A detailed staffing analysis must be conducted by DOC. Our elected officials have already agreed to close records instead of only worsens since that decision was made. All policies should lead to closing records. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Cassandra Warnie, followed by Dave Long, followed by Robert Walker.
Time starts now.
Hello, Chair Rivera and committee members. I am here to speak to you about how we can use supportive housing to help de-incarcerate Rikers. My name is Cassandra Warnie. I'm a senior program manager with the Corporation for Supportive Housing, and our mission is to advance solutions that use housing as a platform to deliver services, improve the lives of the most vulnerable people. And we have a plan on how to expand supportive housing for all people who need it on Rikers Island. This is about reducing homelessness and helping people with behavioral health needs, all part of a much larger plan to de-incarcerate the island. Our analysis shows that there are several thousand people on the island, a little over twenty-five hundred people in a given year, who are experiencing homelessness and struggle with behavioral health needs. When released, these community members struggle to find adequate support. They cycle through crisis systems. And I'll mention this group of twenty-five hundred people costs the city one point four billion dollars just in incarceration costs each year. And this group needs an intervention of supportive housing, which is a combination of affordable housing with voluntary individualized services. Study after study shows this intervention works, and it would take a hundred and eight million dollars annually to provide ongoing housing and services for this group. So one point four billion dollars versus a hundred and eight million dollars. There's more information on our report that you can link to to my written testimony, but I'll elevate two essential budgetary elements. The first is the need to expand JISH. The JISH is involved supportive housing, and also to increase the annual commitment to supportive housing for the city. For JISH, it's the only supportive housing specific to people who are leaving Rikers. There's a hundred and twenty units. There's been a DOHMH RFP to expand it by three hundred and eighty, and the rates are so low, no providers have put in a bid, and so those rates need to be increased. And we need the city to double its commitment to supportive housing and be able to dedicate some of those units to individuals who do not meet the homeless chronicity requirement due to their incarceration history. Most people who need supportive housing are held at Rikers right now are not eligible for the city's main funding of supportive housing because of this definition, and our recommendation solves this. Looking forward to working with you on this.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Dave Long, followed by Robert Walker, followed by Derek Bowers.
Time starts now.
Thank you for allowing me to testify today. My name is Dave Long. I'm the Executive Director and Executive Director of the Liberty Fund. Chair Rivera and council members of this, council members and their staff, I'd just like to, my brief testimony will outline the Liberty Fund programming as well as how the funding from New York City Council will now enable us to continue justice reform while ensuring public safety. I've already submitted testimony and on specifics of our work, so the brief testimony is just to talk about the Liberty Fund in, in, in general. Since two thousand and sixteen, the Liberty Fund has successfully provided person-centered services and access to resources for the pre-trial jail population, population using a jail court-based approach. As part of Liberty Fund's model, our team addresses critical needs, helping clients meet their court requirements while connecting them to best-fit services, especially in housing and workforce development. Liberty Fund's mission is to reduce the number of New Yorkers subject to unnecessary pre-trial detention while simultaneously providing them with much-needed social services. We achieve this mission by providing pre-trial services, including bail and robust case management to any qualifying bail or ROR client throughout the penalty of their court case. The Liberty Fund reduces the pre-trial jail population, prevents the poorest New Yorkers from having their lives upended and their freedom sacrificed, and provides support in order to avoid, to avoid future interactions with the criminal justice system. Continued funding will enable us to continue the, to provide citywide pre-trial services consisting of our person-centered case management, social service referrals, referrals, court reminders, and wellness checks for bail clients, as well as individuals released on enrollment recognizance, ROR, to help restore and stabilize their lives. We heard testimony today from the Department of Corrections, and it's clear that all efforts should be made to keep individuals from being kept in custody and also to minimize recidivism. Funding, providing funding for Liberty Fund, which is exactly what will, will achieve this by having Liberty Fund provide its core mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Robert Walker, followed by Derek Bowers, followed by Malik Simmons.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Walker, and I am the Senior Director of Reentry Services at Project Renewables, a New York City homeless services nonprofit agency. Thank you, Chair Rivera, and fellow City Council members for this opportunity to submit my testimony. For fifty-five years, Project Renewables provided shelter, housing, healthcare, and employment services to hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers experiencing homelessness, with special focus on those affected by mental illness, substance abuse, and justice involvement. We are grateful to the City Council for your support of our program. Every day, I see justice-involved New Yorkers confronted with steep barriers to health, housing, and employment. Many enter jail or prison without proper healthcare in place. Already homeless and with weak support systems, they're further erode once they're behind bars. As a result, they are especially vulnerable once, once they are released. In New York City, more than half of those leaving prisons enter the shelter system, and many have unmet mental health needs. Compounding matters, New York State released incarcerated individuals early to halt the spread of COVID. While this strategy was wise and humane, sufficient supports were not in place. So it shifted the burden to shelter and increased street homelessness. COVID has also widened racial and socioeconomic disparities, worsening the inequities already faced by individuals with justice-involved backgrounds, the vast majority of whom are people of color. Project Renewables provides numerous solutions that break cycles of homelessness, poor health, unemployment, and incarceration among justice-involved New Yorkers. Our parole support and treatment program, PSDP, provides housing and support services to parolees with mental illness.
Time expired.
PSDP offers ninety transitional housing beds and forty-five units of permanent supportive housing. Our multidisciplinary team helps clients manage mental illness and substance abuse, develop independent living skills, and set long-term goals for education and employment. PST has served more than nine hundred and fifty clients and helped hundreds transition to supportive or permanent housing, reunite with families, and complete parole. Eighty-nine percent of PSDP graduate residents successfully maintain housing for at least one year. We are working with the New York Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to develop twenty-four more housing units in late twenty-two or early twenty-three. We partner with prisons and parole units for PSDP referrals. In addition, our staff collaborates with the Community Orientation and Reentry Program Unit at the St. St. Correctional Facility to prepare mentally ill inmates released through workshops that we provide and by identifying individuals that qualify for PSDP. I want to thank you for allowing me to have my testimony.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Derek Bowers, followed by Malik Simmons, followed by Andre Ward.
Time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Derek Bowers, and I'm the Director of Social Enterprise in New York City for the Center for Employment Opportunities, also known as CEO. Thank you to Chair Rivera and all council members present. I appreciate the opportunity to submit testimony about our program model and work across New York City and the need for increased resources to help assist returning citizens with the ongoing support necessary to build career capital and financial stability. CEO's mission is to provide immediate, effective, and comprehensive employment services to individuals recently returning home from incarceration and young adults who have had interactions with the criminal legal system. As the largest provider of reentry employment services in New York and the country, our intentional focus is to serve individuals facing the most significant barriers to gaining and maintaining employment while also returning three dollars and thirty cents for every dollar of public investment. Our four-stage program has two core components. Transitional employment, which we provide through partnerships with agencies like DOP, and vocational services to help participants obtain long-term employment outside of CEO. Since its inception, CEO has made nearly thirty-nine, thirty-nine thousand unsubsidized job placements for formerly incarcerated individuals, over half of which benefited New Yorkers. While we focus primarily on employment services, CEO maintains a commitment to meeting participants' complex needs through wraparound services. CEO is also committed to being an important part of this administration's gun violence prevention and strategy by engaging young adults between the ages of eighteen to twenty-four who live in impacted communities and are out of school and are justice-involved. Additional investment in expanded criminal justice services is critical for CEO and other organizations like CEO. And CEO respectfully asks for support of our ass of a hundred thousand through the crisis management system, a hundred fifty thousand through innovative criminal justice, two hundred fifty thousand through the speakers initiative, and as a member of the ATI reentry coalition, we are asking for an increase of the ATI initiative by one point one million for all of our coalition partners. CEO also recommends the following policy changes. Close Rikers urgently and implement alternatives to incarceration. Provide holistic gun violence responses that protect communities of color from further harm. Stop incarceration for technical violations of supervision. Structure probation supervision so that it does not interfere with work obligations and goals. Increase access to high-quality jobs to individuals with past convictions and remove barriers for recently incarcerated individuals accessing workforce training programs. And lastly, eliminate policies that criminalize poverty through the legal system. CEO believes that these recommendations, as well as an investment in additional criminal justice resources, will provide an opportunity to expand our program to more justice-impacted individuals, which would help reduce recidivism, increase public safety, and facilitate the employment and economic mobility of New Yorkers with a criminal record. At CEO, we don't just put individuals to work, we help keep them out of prison. At CEO, we don't just put individuals to work, we help keep them out of prisons and jails. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Malik Sammons, followed by Andre Ward, followed by David Frudenthal.
Time starts now.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for your time today. My name is Malik Sammons, and I'm here representing Youth for New York City Collaborative, which is a collection of eight youth programs in New York City. And Youth Build is essentially just a program for helping youth who were out of school and out of work, mainly dropped at a high school, in order to help get their high school equivalency and also have workforce development training. So as a nonprofit that has specialized in workforce development for over 40 years in New York City, Youth Build programs have gained a particular expertise in meeting young people where they are and helping to create a path for them towards success. Youth Build's primary audience is young people who are out of school and out of work. An overwhelming majority of our students come from economically deprived areas and are Black or Latinx and have experienced hardship young people are not supposed to bear. About 30% of Youth Build participants have the court-involved background. They are welcome in our program wholeheartedly, but court-involved reentry citizens are often ostracized in our society and forgotten about and creating substantial policy. This is hurtful to them naturally, but also to all of us. We lose their productivity, their potential contributions and participation, their reentry back into the broader community, as well as lost. And New Yorkers who face trouble with the criminal justice system can be incredible contributors to the workforce. One example I can think of is Eddie Gibbs, my East Harlem Assemblyman, who took office earlier this year. Suddenly, Assemblyman Gibbs has moved past his early transgressions and is now a living example of how an ex-offender can bring a strong impact to their community. Or take Youth Build's national CEO, John Valverde, who previously served a 14-year sentence himself and emerged to lead a national movement and have done beautifully. He is more fortunate than others benefiting from access to higher education while serving his time while incarcerated and achieving a BA and a law degree while incarcerated. What if every prisoner was able to access that kind of support? There are ex-offenders holding down good jobs all over the place, beating the odds, but so many others are held back and denied entry. It is imperative that this large community of often untapped talented people be invested in and given full opportunity to work and create careers of living and lives for themselves that are dignified. Programs such as pretrial diversion programs can be impactful assets to young people who are caught in the plight of the criminal justice system. And actually, in 17 of 18 measured categories, the Center for Court Innovations, Project Reset, has shown beneficial use of programs like this for young people. So what we are advocating for is for young people to have a chance, is for them to kind of have a restart for themselves and to have investment within these reentry and diversion programs for young people throughout New York City. Thank you, guys, all for your time. I appreciate you hearing us today, and we look forward to seeing this progress being made in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Andre Ward, followed by David Frudenthal, followed by Ruth McDaniels.
Time starts now.
Thank you. And you know, it's with gratitude for you, Madam Chair Rivera and the rest of the members of the committee that I'm able to testify today. My name is Andre Ward. I'm the associate vice president of the David Rothenberg Center for Public Policy at the Fortune Society, also a member of the Fair Chance for Housing Coalition. The Fortune Society has been around for over 54 years as an organization, and we support the successful reentry from incarceration, and we promote alternatives to incarceration, right, thus strengthening the fabric of our communities. And we do this by believing in the capacity of people's ability to change and transform. I'm also a formerly incarcerated Black man who spent three and a half years on Rikers Island from 1998 to 1992 as both an adolescent and as an adult. And during that period, I experienced and witnessed countless episodes of abuse and neglect, including frequent medical and mental health neglect and the inadequacy of programming which properly prepares those detained for community reentry. 2022 marks 30 years since I was at Rikers, yet according to the research and the experiences of the people who we serve, Rikers Island continues to perpetuate the deplorable conditions of the past, including inadequate support for those with mental health needs. More than 40% of the population have a mental health diagnosis. And not to even talk about the fact that 18 people who have died on Rikers Island since January 2021 reminds me of what I myself witnessed as a young man and the death of fellow detainees, both as a result of those incarcerated harming one another, as well as correctional officers abusing detainees. One other thing to note that's important is that the counter, the court-appointed Nunez Monitor issued a special report, as you all know, just one week ago on March 16th, that talked about the conditions on Rikers Island. And chief among those issues and the first listed is ineffective staff management, supervision, and deployment. And so when we think about those things, there's been little to no improvements in the number of staff available to work with people in custody, as you all talked about earlier. And as of January 26, 2022, 30% of the staff are either not reporting to work and/or not available to work directly with people in custody, hugely concerning. And so one of the things that we really note is that let's correct, right, this solely punitive pathways in New York City's criminal legal system and make rehabilitation a priority. And we can divert funds from the swollen, inefficient operations of the city jail system to programs with genuine promise of progress, from diversion and prevention programs to vocational training. Leaders like yourselves, I'm sure, are committed to this, and we're really grateful to all of you for your passion and work in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from David Frudenthal, followed by Ruth McDaniels, followed by Queen.
Time starts now.
Hi, David Frudenthal here from Carnegie Hall. And I'm so happy to be following on the heels of Andre's Fortune Society's testimony. It really speaks to, you know, to this work. I just want to echo thanks to Chair Rivera and the many council members that were here today. It's an honor to share this space with you all and the amazing service providers and advocates who were participating. That really speaks to the urgency of the issues, you know, they've taken up and the fact that there are solutions at hand. They're hard. Want to bring us back to the Department of Probation and the solutions that Commissioner Bermuda spoke to forge pathways for their clients and to help them succeed. I'm especially wanting to underscore the agency's call for continued investment in their neighborhood opportunity networks or the NEONS and the many essential resources that make these community hubs what they are. Carnegie Hall's stake on this is Neon Arts. We're the agency's private partner, as Commissioner spoke to. The program, you heard it already, but we integrate free arts programming into the seven NEONS across the city, supporting young people exploring the arts, establishing positive peer relationships, and developing important social and career skills. Our piece of this is to run the participatory budgeting that happens at each of the NEONS. We record the grant-making process, select arts partners in the communities, coordinating events, working with the grantee artists, the arts organizations, community stakeholders. We've been at this for about a dozen years. You know, from our perspective, Neon Arts demonstrates the value and importance of the arts in the justice space and the ways that culture can be part of a more humane and effective response for justice-involved and at-risk New Yorkers. It enables creative expression, personal development. It shows the power of arts and culture to engage young people, to strengthen our communities, and to collaborate with community leaders and local organizations to make the city a better place. It's funded through the council's innovative criminal justice programs initiatives, as well as individual members. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Ruth McDaniels, followed by Queen, followed by Enid Owens.
Time starts now.
You're still muted, Ruth.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ruth McDaniels, and I'm a Harlem resident for well over 50 years. And I'm also a retired law enforcement officer and a mother of five and a grandmother of seven. After working in every precinct in this Harlem community, with every precinct and in every school in this community, I can tell you the public safety starts with the mother. Mothers of Harlem are the hearts of the neighborhood. They have been badly mistreated over years. I've seen mothers and daughters and children, aunties and nannies cycle through Road Singers Correction, right, on Rikers Island. And it also holds, and while also holding families down of their incarcerated loved ones, the males, the uncles, the uncles, the cousins, the brothers. This is a product of mass incarceration. We all know that stuff. Harlem is ground zero for mass incarceration. Harlem has to be the place in which we make the change. We can be the change right here by transforming what their place of Lincoln Center represents, from a prison to a women's center of injustice. And it can take place with healing and being able to serve the residents, the returning citizens, the detainees, and their families and the surrounding community. Right now, the city is planning to keep women and gender expansive at Rosie's for more than five years and then relocate them to Q Gardens, Queens, a facility that is connected to the men's jail. The men's jail is a part of the problem that has traumatized a lot of the women who are already incarcerated. We could do better than that. We can do better than that. This is just recycling the same old problem that has torn Harlem and their families and other Black communities and Black and Brown communities of neighborhoods of such as this. Too many women that have broken, too many women have broken, have been broken by the system. And I have to just say this. When the system breaks down, our families break down. We know for a fact that it's our women who take care of us. We know for a fact that if we don't have women who are sound-minded and taken care of, all we're doing is failing the community. We no longer sit back and act as though we don't know what's happening. If Harlem was ground zero for mass incarceration, it needs to be ground zero for restoration. I'm here because I want that to happen, all in corrections. Please take a moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Queen, followed by Enid Owens, followed by Betsy Ramos.
Time starts now.
Queen, you're still unmuted.
Hold on a second. Okay.
We hear you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Queen, and I am part of the community. I am a trainee for the LGBTQ. I should be the queen of the community because how Rikers Island treat us is how they should be treating themselves. And I am not with what was said. I was at home first, but now I am at Fortune Society. And I, and something needs to be done. If they transfer all the trainees and all the women to different facilities, this won't be right. For a prime example, I was in prison, but I wasn't here at Rikers Island. I was in a state penitentiary, which is the same thing, which is not no different from any other penitentiary. Due to the fact that if you lock, if you lock in a homosexual or a gay into another room with a straight individual who do not tolerate disrespect from the correctional officers, and they try to put them in a room with, put us in a room with them, we're going to get, we're going to get destroyed, pretty much get destroyed. And the reason why I said that, because they sit up there manipulating the situation knowing that we are definitely fighting for our rights to stay alive. I mean, I have fought my way through situations dealing with negativity, guys who have no well-being, who's not going home. And they don't care. Their time get extended. You got so many of my people that's in prison right now who's trying to fight to get out. And it's terrible how they gotta fight to stay alive. It's very uncomfortable. The community are trying to help. We want to, we want to try to help them.
Time starts.
In order to help them, we have to, we want to see them come out. They have to come out of there. So I'm with my community now. I'm sorry. I wasn't, I didn't like the way the correctional officers, the head correctionals, I'm down for the CMs because they didn't like what was said. Okay? So other than that, I follow with that.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Enid Owens, followed by Betsy Ramos, followed by Kelly Bream.
Time starts now.
Yeah, no, it's a council. My name is Stay Owens. I'm a Brooklyn girl residing in Harlem, which is District 9, represented by council member Christian Richardson-Jordan. I'm asking the city council to change the plans for the women at Rose M. Singer Center on Rikers. Instead of plans to send them to Q Gardens five years from now, where they would share spaces with men, they need their own site and care. Please create a women's center for justice in Manhattan, either at Lincoln in Harlem or Bayview in Chelsa. I am a formerly incarcerated woman. I have been jailed on Rikers Island 23 times. I was sexually assaulted six times during various times of my incarceration. If it were not for the women that I met through this horrific journey, I am not sure if I would still be upright. No, I am sure I would not be upright without these women. I'm asking with the utmost respect that those at Rosie's not be moved to Q Gardens as the city closes Rikers. That would further traumatize these women as there would be spaces shared with men who might be the cause of their visual trauma the women of Rosie's are facing. I'm asking again that Lincoln or Chelsa be the locations for these women. It is time we start treating those that are currently incarcerated as human beings. No one deserves to go through what I did at Rikers. We have to break the cycle of trauma and abuse. If this was your mother, daughter, sister, aunt, niece, cousin, what would you propose department treatment would be for her? Do what is right because it could be your family member next. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Betsy Ramos, followed by Kelly Bream, followed by Mark Graham.
Time starts now.
Hello, my name is Betsy Ramos, and I'm here representing WJCA. I'm a formerly incarcerated woman who spent 24 years in prison and a year of that on Rikers Island. When I arrived at Rikers Island, I was a victim of domestic abuse, rolling incarcerated for a crime that my abuse had committed. When I got there, I received no help of any kind. I was assaulted by a CEO. The mental health put me in a, in mental health, and DOC overrode their recommendation to keep me there and instead put me in shoes. I'm asking that the women replaced in Lincoln or Bayview and not in Q Gardens where they be re-traumatized by the very men that abused them. Also asking that the gender expansive people also be given that opportunity and to not wait the five years that is needed. People are dying in Rikers Island, and since 1998 that I was there till now, it has only gotten worse. It is a new beginning. Thank you so much for your time and for allowing me to speak. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Kelly Bream, followed by Mark Graham.
Time starts now.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. Thank you, Chair Rivera and council members for allowing me the time to speak today. My name is Kelly Bream. I currently reside in the Councils and Coroner section of Staten Island. Council member David Carr represents me. I am 50 years old, a mother of six, an executive in the business sector for 20 years. I hold a bachelor's in psychology, and I'm currently a master's level graduate student. I am also a formerly incarcerated woman, DV survivor, trafficking survivor, former sex worker, former heroin and crack addict. I am an active member of the WJCA's Justice for Women Task Force. There is a saying, "Doing the same thing expecting different results is insanity." And here I sit before you decades later pleading to stop the insanity cycle of Rikers, in particular, the women and the gender expansive of the Rose M. Singer Center. The city should change its plan- The city should change its plan to keep Rosie's open for five more years than relocating to Q Gardens, which is coed. Instead, New York City should be the catalyst for the first gender responsive and gender expansive facility in the US based on trauma-informed and strengths-based foundations by utilizing either Lincoln in Harlem or Bayview in Chelsea. My story, like many others who have passed through the doors from Rikers, is multi-layered with trauma, bad decisions, and survival. My incarceration was during the mid-nineties, and although Rosie's was less than a decade old, it was falling apart. I entered Rikers broken, bruised, depleted, chronically sexually assaulted, and dehumanized by both systems and individuals. I received no programming, no mental health support, no basic needs such as clothes and shoes. And yes, like Nancy said, I also had no shoes. Nothing has changed. The pink elephant in the room. Rikers did not save me. If anything, by the time I came out the other side, I had full-blown complex PTSD due to the chronic abuse of the correctional officers. The abuse was both verbal and sexual. I feared anyone finding out in retribution, and the abuse contributed to believe that I was not worthy of dignity. The women of the Rose M Singer Center were my support and the inspiration to fight for those who were never allowed a voice, silenced forever. The insanity cycle calling this corrections, the insanity cycle is calling this corrections instead of what it really is, warehousing, dehumanizing, and abusing them, and in some cases, killing them. New York City can break the insanity cycle of trauma and incarceration by securing Lincoln and Bayview as a women's justice center that is a place for care and healing for mothers, daughters, siblings, and children, and community. Once again, thank you for my testimony.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Mark Graham.
Time starts now.
Thank you. Good afternoon. First and foremost, thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me this opportunity to present before the committee. My name is Mark Graham. I'm the Executive Director of a transitional housing program that I created in New York City called the Redemption Center. I have two master's degrees, including a master's in divinity. I'm a certified peer advocate with Bridge Back to Life, Inc. program, as well as a proud member of the Treatment Not Jails Act Coalition, which seeks to expand access to treatment courts for those who are bought into the criminal legal system due to underlying substance use and mental health issues. I am a survivor of the New York prison system. I spent a total of twenty-five years in prison, starting when I was thirteen years old. But somehow, the angels were with me because my one valuable life has had a far better outcome than the great majority of my peers. Good outcomes are difficult, too impossible for people leaving incarceration, as evidenced by the overwhelming prevalence of homelessness, unemployment, poverty, and yes, recidivism amongst formerly incarcerated people. Studies all over the country would tell you this, but I know this because I have lived it myself and I see it in those I serve in my reentry work Monday through Sunday each week. I witnessed a grotesque revolving door that exists for people with untreated mental health and substance dependence challenges who were released from prison. If they were, if they are not engaging in self-harm accomplishment to take their own lives or overdosing on drugs, they are getting rearrested, placing them and our community at risk. This is what jail and prison does to people. And this failed experiment in mass incarceration outrageously expensive, five hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars a year to incarcerate just one person in our city jails. We have to stop funding billions of dollars into the failed system that torture, traumatize, and destabilizes people and makes our communities less safe. Instead, let's invest our money in something that works, treatment courts. The Office of Court Administration estimates that for every one dollar invested in treatment courts, the state saves two thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars, two thousand twenty-one cent in benefit. Why? Because these courts provide a structured way to bring people out of the criminal legal system and give them the treatment and services they actually need. The Treatment Not Jail Act will open access to these courts for people who need it. I asked this City Council to support this legislation and instead of funding jails, instead of funding a mental health, instead of funding jails, fundamental health, and substance use programs that makes people better and ultimately makes our community safer. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the public testimony. If we have inadvertently forgotten to call on someone to testify, if that person could raise their hand using the Zoom raise hand function, we will try to hear from you now. Seeing no hands, I will turn it over to Chair Rivera to close the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone here. That concludes today's hearing to Commissioner Bermuda, Commissioner Molina, the Departments of Probation and Correction. I especially like to thank my colleagues through the council, as well as the city and state elected officials, advocates, and impacted people who took time today to share their stories with us. I think I speak for the entire committee when I express my gratitude for your time and testimony and sharing your real-life experiences. I am disappointed to say that the concern and alarm that I expressed at the outset of this hearing have not been addressed and that there is little that we learned today that we did not already know. And I must again stress the critical importance of full transparency and open, honest, continued communication from the department in order for the council to carry out its charter mandated duties of oversight and investigation. I sincerely hope the department fulfills their commitment in immediately providing the council with the adequate data necessary to properly evaluate a budget that is responsible both fiscally and to the staff and people incarcerated and focused on reform. To all the members of the public, I just want to thank you again for your patience. Many of you waited hours to testify. We must prioritize care, support, and those upstream solutions to push the path fair chance housing while creating more permanent supportive housing solutions for our returning citizens. And we must reinvest in our communities to bring violence down, but also increase programming inside these New York City facilities that are in dire, dire conditions and to get people to court on time. The humanitarian crisis in progress at Rikers Island is not limited to the physical facilities there. As we heard today, the impact is felt citywide. We must not lose sight of our shared goal to swiftly and substantially improve safety and overall conditions in the jail. All of us here are ready, eager, and able to honor our pledge to the people of New York City in pursuing oversight, accountability, and reform. And I urge the administration to meet us with the urgency and the commitment that this moment demands. Thank you, everyone. And with that, I will close out the hearing. Thanks again to all of the staff. Thank you so much. Agatha, thank you.